Welcome, everybody, and welcome to our informal session. And I guess we're going to get started with a city council briefing on Project Wayne Update.
Good afternoon, Mayor, good afternoon, Vice Mayor, and good afternoon, Council. We have potentially a very exciting briefing for you today. We're very anxious to hear some potential direction from you on what we should do next with this. Important to know before -- oh, Amanda, I'm not working here. Try it now. There we go. And so, Mayor, one thing before we dive into this, a couple of things. Project Wayne, you all are accustomed to seeing from us code names and project names when we're working with potential partners on delivery of projects for which we are competing that require us to remain, basically, to operate with some discretion. And so, that's, this is certainly one of those, one of those projects where we're not able to talk about the company name or the people that we're working with. But we have been approached about tentatively locating a very large project here in Virginia Beach. And so, to talk about, to talk about this project, we're looking at something that would, in the interest of not burying the lead here, that would require the rezoning of property. We've looked across the city. We were really only able to identify one place where this could go, and that's what we're here to talk about. The use is advanced manufacturing, and specifically, this group is focused on the manufacturer of medical projects, or products, excuse me. They would need between 200 and 250 acres. They would invest just, at minimum, $175 million, and they would employ at minimum 400 people. As we're talking about medical project, product manufacture, the great thing about these jobs is they would come at a level that is higher than the average, we believe they would come at a level that is higher than the median wage for the community. And so, an exciting project if we have a site that is appropriate to locate it. As I mentioned, we are competing with, as is generally the case with projects like this, we're competing with every other community in America that would have a site that could fit it, as well as the states that hold those communities. So, let's talk about where. Really, the only place where the public owns the amount of land that could be used to locate a project like this is in the interfacility traffic area. And so, what is, we often call that the ITA. What is the ITA? Well, that is generally, you can see on the map here. I won't walk over there so that I can stay on the, so that I can stay here on the mic so that the, so that people watching this on either online or on television can hear. But if you were to look at the map, you can see Naval Air Station Oceana, sort of in the, what would be the northeast portion of this map. On the south and west, you can see the Fintris landing field. And so, the, so when we talk about the ITA, we're talking about the area between those two facilities. Your ITA plan was adopted in 2011, updated in 2017, as part of your 2016 comprehensive plan. And it's important for me to note at this point that the area that we're talking about is below your green line. Now, in talking with some of you, you have asked that I, that I mention that this is in the, one of the northernmost portions of your green line and an area that is, that has development around it. However, for purposes of clarity with the public, it is important that I mention at this point that the property that we are showing you is below the green line. Looking at your ITA master plan, here is, here is a map that is straight out of the plan to sort of delineate how the, how the property is carved up, to talk about some of the potential uses that are there. In a moment, I'll come back to this when I do go over to the map to point to help orient everyone. Priorities that were, that were adopted within the plan, economic development, agricultural research, the provision of municipal services, and then also conservation. Looking at the land use, we, so you can see presently, well, presently, a good, a good portion of the Princess Anne Athletic Complex is in this, and so, there is some expansion of that facility that's planned. Municipal services, obviously, our municipal campus here is within the area, and then agricultural production happens within the, in the ITA presently. As it relates to what we might do next, we can, we can take no action. You can tell, you could, you could tell me to let our potential project partner know that you're not interested in this. We could, we could, we could look at a transfer of land to the Development Authority, which I am, I'll, I put that up here because it's an option, but I, I am certain that you all are going to tell me not to do that nonetheless. It's, it's important for me to bring you all possible options. And then, third, we could, we could begin a conversation around rezoning to come with full public engagement, to hear from the community on what that might be. Now, before I stop for questions, I'm going to back up to, to this map to broadly orient you on where this might work. And I apologize for stepping away from the microphone for just a moment.
So, Virginia Beach National Golf Course is right here. The Princess Anne Athletic Complex and its expanded use field is here. Landstown, Landstown Road currently comes here and then on or about right here works, makes the sort of the right angle. We anticipate that if you all were to tell us to go forward with this, we would, we would recommend beginning here on the far north side of, of the farmland, the land that is currently being farmed, sort of adjacent to Virginia.
To Virginia Beach National Golf Course. However, we will go wherever you send us. Yes, sir.
If you can show us on that map, where is said green line that we speak of? Where would that be?
Yes, sir, I'm going to head back over there. And I'm going to take this with me this time.
So, and so, how deep into that is that, that's every bit of it, is it below the green line?
Yes, sir, it sure is. So, I'm going to use both of these maps. So, your green line, as you can see, runs through here, and you can see here is your ITA, right here. So, if I come forward one slide, you can see, imagine that line came down like this. So, we've, we've worked recognizing, recognizing the importance of preserving agricultural use and, look, referencing your agricultural reserve program, the long-term commitment to preserving agricultural uses in the community. We made the assumption, and I recognize that's a dangerous thing for us to do. So, I want to, I want to preface this by saying, we will do, we will go wherever you send us, as we always do. But we made the assumption, given the long history of preserving, preserving agricultural use in the southern part of the city, wherever we could, that you would want us to work as far north in this area as was possible. And so, that's what we've attempted to do. We've tried to go as far north as we can in even bringing this forward, recognizing that you all may tell us to just stop, we don't want to go any further, but, but we wanted to bring you, we wanted to bring this to you for your consideration at this point, and I will stop and take any questions now.
Barbara.
I'm not sure what you can say, what you can, but this is only Phase One of a three-phase project.
Yes, ma'am, we do, so, 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 yes, ma'am. We do anticipate, in the confidential letter of intent that we received from the, from the prospect, they do anticipate three total phases that would, that would ultimately employ as many as 2,000 people and could ultimately generate capital investment of greater than 500 million. That said, it would be, I would be remiss if, and it would not be, it would not be appropriate for me to base anything that we're talking about here today on those subsequent phases, because again, the only, the only thing that we are working in the present is Phase One. But yes, ma'am, they do have an, they do have, they do have a hope for continued growth if we are willing to, if we were willing to consider that once they were up and stabilized.
Anybody else at this point?
Can you point out the purple buildings there? Is that the, that's the municipal complex?
Let me look, sorry, at the right, very right there.
Yes, which is where we are.
So, Councilmember, if you're referring to the, to the, to the complex of buildings sort of right on the corner, yes, sir, that is your municipal complex at the end of Princess Anne Road, yes. Well, where Princess Anne Road comes to a hard stop and then turns, makes a right angle.
Okay, worth.
One more follow-up question. So, there's no other private land in the city of Virginia Beach that can meet this need?
No, sir, not that I'm aware of, not that, not that we have identified that could be, that could be delivered in a time appropriate for this project. Also, in going back to Ms. Henley's point, allow for the potential future phases.
Okay, worth in that question.
And so, is there any approximate data yet, or can you say about the type of investment, the number of, well, you've got the number of jobs, but the total investment could be over taxes and everything else?
Yes, sir. So, so, we're, on today's construction values, if all three phases were being built in the present, we anticipate that that would come in, that that would deliver in between 500 and 600 million worth of, worth of new development in the community. That would all be taxable in year one, and that's construction value, not to include the equipment and furnishings that would go in the facility.
Chris.
Mr. Adams, is this unsolicited? They came, did this, or this group come to us?
So, going to try to think of what I can say without, so, not, without betraying a confidence of our colleagues, the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, this is a group that came, that, that, that our colleagues at the state, that the governor's team was working with. And so, so, it, it, as it relates to the city of Virginia Beach, yes, sir, unsolicited, but it, but it's important for me to note that the governor's team was, was working with this prospect prior to us meeting them.
So, if this didn't go forth, would this still be an opportunity for the open market?
So, if, so, yes, sir, if, if, if you were to tell me you did not want to move forward, I would immediately relay that to, to my colleagues on the governor's team at the Virginia Economic Development Partnership. They would, they would begin moving to try to save this project for Virginia and locate it somewhere else. If not, it would go, it would go to another state.
But in terms of if there were other interested parties across the United States in this zone or this area?
Oh, yes, sir, make no mistake, this, a $500 million investment in 2,000 jobs would be, would be a project that every economic developer in America would chase hard. Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Okay, anybody else at this point? Barbara, Barbara, and then I mean.
Okay, I was just asking, just to recall, it's 200, 200 acres?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
200 at minimum, but 250 is what we anticipate would be needed with infrastructure, stormwater. Yes, ma'am. Phase one, yes, ma'am.
I just, you know that I'm going to have to have some comments. Josh looks like he wants to ask something.
Happy yielding to you.
I'd rather everybody else have plenty of time. I'll take all of it if I don't watch it.
Just a couple of questions about what existing use is going on at the property right now. I know it's city-owned, so is it being farmed?
Yes, sir, it's being farmed.
And in terms of, you know, I mean, when, when we look at the green line, and I know in the, in the back of a lot of people's minds, I think we kind of picture Indian River Road as, you know, as being the boundary line between the, you know, the agricultural community and the remainder of the city. That triangle there looks to be a little, just different than some of the outlying areas that are within the green line. So, can you give maybe a little bit of history, perhaps, about how that was added in? Is that?
So, so, I will try, but it, but this is where, if you were, if you could see out the back of your head, you would look at me, I'm about to get graded by Ms. Henley on this. And so, and so, so I will.
I just teed it up for her.
Yeah, you sure did. And so, this, this is where, and whatever I say here, make no mistake, Ms. Henley will, will fix it in a minute. And, and, and I don't say that to be funny, it's just.
That's reality.
It'd be wrong for me to do anything other than acknowledge Ms. Henry's longstanding defense of agricultural uses in the community and also of land use below the green line. So, and also, her tenure on this body, she, she was here when all this happened, and so, and I'm, I've only been here for eight years now. So, my understanding is that this, that the parcel in question was part of the city's purchase of a large farm, and, and that when it was, when we purchased it, it was added to basically what we then called, it was already in what we then called the transition area, what now the Navy, in our work with the Navy out of BRAC, we now call the interfacility traffic area. And so, the, I am assuming that the city's acquisition of that parcel was, was, as has been our longstanding sort of practice, to, to promote conforming uses with, with, with the activities around Oceana. But, but this is where, beyond that, I'm going to have to yield to Ms. Henley, because again, she, she is, she is the expert on what we did and why we did as it relates to this farm.
Before we get to Ms. Henley, you know, you know, by all means, you know, this is a critical thing that a lot of us came up after we were put on the BRAC list back in 2005.
Yes, sir.
What does the Navy stand, you know, on this potential project?
So, so, generally speaking, when we look at, when we look at our, and Mayor, thank you for recognizing what is approaching a 20-year commitment following the 2004 BRAC action to, to, to promote conforming uses and to assist the Navy in preventing encroachment that sort of is not, does not conform to their use. Generally, when we look at, at the various restrictions, and I'll use the APZ-1 as an example, because that is generally our most restrictive, or at least it's most, it's, as I have had to administer, in my, in my work administering, that seems to be the most restrictive. Generally, our efforts are about preventing residential use in these areas, and that is certainly true of the ITA, where, where, that in this area, residential uses would be, would be prohibited. And so, what does that leave us with? Will it leave us with agricultural uses, which is the current form, or industrial uses that, that, industrial and commercial uses that fit within a set of parameters as defined by, is now adopted in our zoning ordinance? So, so, in this case, you would be, if you, if you all were to tell us to go forward, you would be, you would be tracking with that industrial use specifically.
Okay, Patrick.
Basically, if, if Council authorized us to begin a rezoning process, and this was to be changed to industrial use, the use that's contemplated, that was proposed by the firm that submitted a letter of interest, could, would meet, would fall within a compatible use for, for the Navy requirements for the ITA.
Okay, Rocky, and then Barbara.
Mr. Mayor, just to, just to summarize this real quick, and Councilmember Shulman talked about Indian River Road being the green line. That's just how much is known here in Virginia Beach, the green line. It's talked about everywhere, and I think that if we're going to do this, this could very easily be a nose of the camel, where if we start here, it could be somewhere else. And I do think that we need to, to yield to Councilwoman Henley about this, because this is in her district. I certainly don't have a green line in my district, and, and I would like to know what, what her thoughts are and what her feelings are, and I would like to support her along the way. And if it's the will of this body to move the green line, then I certainly think we need to take advice and guidance from Ms. Henley, because it is in her district. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, and I concur, but I think one of the major components of this, you know, given the magnitude of the change and, you know, appreciating the will of the people, is that a heavy, heavy civic engagement, you know, would definitely be part of any process moving forward. Barbara.
Well, I don't think it's a question of moving the green line. I think it's a question of whether there is a green line or not. This was established in the, with the very first comprehensive plan in 1979, and we had some very astute planners at that time. Bob Scott was our planning director, and Jack Whitney worked closely with him, and they were, were very forthcoming in letting us know where it was appropriate to extend infrastructure for development and where it wasn't. And they couldn't have been more right on the money, because now that we know so much more about issues with flooding and needing to look at the type of the land and so forth, they, they hit it absolutely right. And so, the green line has been right where it is ever since '79. Over time, of course, we recognized that there had already been some rezonings below the green line back in the early '60s that we challenged with the downzoning, but that didn't work. So, there were already some properties that were zoned for development that needed to go forward, which they did. And so, we established what we've called the transition area, and that really does go from the green line to Indian River Road, all of that area in there being the transition area, where we would transition uses down from suburban to rural. And so, that's why within this area, that's the transition area, we have very restricted regulations for what's to go in there and so forth. This particular part of the transition area, when we first had it, we called, we had a transition area one, transition area two, and transition area three. What this is, was the original transition area one, and we recognized very early that an appropriate, very good use was recreation. And so, we were going to call this our Reca-Meca. Actually, I said, the first purchase that you referred to was a Lake Ridge purchase, and I really almost brought that document today. I've got a lot of documents. But we did buy the Lake Ridge property in the, in the mid-'90s, which was the beginning of this purchase that we have now. And we had a study group that determined what kind of development should be in that area of the Lake Ridge, and we looked heavily, of course, at the medical, at the educational, at the recreational. And so, that's how we, I think the first thing that we developed out of that was the amphitheater. And so, all of that, and then, of course, the golf course, that was the area essentially along Princess Anne Road that had been purchased for a housing, but they gave up on that, and the city was able to make a really good buy and purchase the Lake Ridge property. And so, that's how we really began planning in this area. I was on that steering committee as a representative of council. I was the Punggoh District Representative at that time, and the other liaison for the council was Robert Dean. So, we did have a, an extensive community steering committee on that and so forth. And so, we did, at that time, really look into this area as the importance of recreation and working with our medical, with our educational, having different villages and so forth, and of course, agriculture. Historically, we like to say in the city that our three major industries are agriculture, tourism, and military. And please don't forget that agriculture is also an important industry. You know, I really, it hurts every time we have these discussions and we say, well, it's just agriculture, so we can get a whole lot more money if we get another kind of use in here. Yeah, other industries do produce more in taxes, but they also require a heck of a lot more in infrastructure. And there is no infrastructure in this area that's even in the CIP, except that little bit of Landstown Road that we had planned and so forth, we're going to put there when we thought we were getting a baseball team. But there is no infrastructure in this area, and it's going to cost a whole lot of money to put it there if this is the decision. Agriculture also produces a very important product, and I think it's very important that we all have food and fiber. And so, it's been a longstanding position of city councils in Virginia Beach that we value our agricultural industry and want to make sure we maintain it for the future, and that's why we came up with the ARP, to make certain that we would maintain a critical mass of property that would make agriculture a viable industry. If you don't have enough land to produce, you don't have a viable industry. And so, that's kind of more history than you wanted to know. But this was the transition area one, and then, of course, when BRAC came and Oceana was decided, and I wasn't on the council at that time, this is just what I read in the newspaper, we're leaving, leaving Virginia Beach. But I believe the council agreed that in this area, because Oceana had been looking for an outline field and hadn't been able to determine one, they determined they really needed to keep Fintris, but of course, the nighttime flying was a major concern. And so, the concession was from the city was that, okay, in this area between Oceana and Fintris, there would be no more residential except what could be built by right. And, and that's what the agreement was, and that name, interfacility traffic area, was put there as an overlay into the old transition area one by the Navy. And so, when I came back on the council after that, the folks in that area who owned property, because before it had been the same as the other areas in the transition area for this, as far as the development regulations, but now that there could be no residential, they said, well, what, what are we going to do with our property? So, that's when we did the first ITA study, and a very good study, but at that time, it was owned by a lot of private individuals who had other plans. And so, initially, of course, that had to recognize those plans. But then, after a bit, and, and the state and the Navy agreed that of this property, I think the city had to spend $15 million a year buying property to protect Oceana, they agreed that property in the ITA could be purchased too. And so, that's when the city started purchasing the property in the ITA. Well, by 2016 or so, 2016, '17, the city owned a lot of that property in, in the ITA, plus we were also talking about no longer doing the Southeastern Expressway, so we did an update of the interfacility traffic area plan. And that was adopted by the city council December 12th, 2017, and incorporated in our top plan. So, this is the plan for the ITA, which had extensive public involvement and so forth. And, but another very important thing, that this plan, not only in recognizing the uses, but recognize the limiting factors of the land. And we know that this area is in the very delicate southern watershed with a lot of problems. And if you read this, and I think you've all got copies of this in your agenda, over and over and over again, it says it's flat with high water table, poorly drained soil, drainage problems. But what does work there is recreation and agriculture. And, and this is, this is, this is a very good plan, and, and I really hope that this is what we will stick with, because it recognizes the value of, of our three major industries, military, Navy, the tourism, because this is where our amateur sports really got its start, and we can do a lot more in agriculture, because if you look on, I think it's page 21, when it talks about agricultural production, this is where we envision a lot of the research that we need to do to go forward with our agricultural industry as times change, you would get climate change and so forth. And so, I really hope we'll stick with this study. This is what our comprehensive plan says. If it does come down in progression in other phases, it's right in the area where there are residential neighborhoods that were built there, because they predated the green line designation. So, people have purchased their homes and made their investments based on our plans, and if our plans aren't any good, that doesn't say too much for us. But if you do decide you want to go forward, I think it needs at least the same process that we used with Rudy Loup, because I think abolishing the green line is, is a major change. Bringing an industrial park to an area that was in our plan for recreation, preservation, and agriculture is a major change, and I think it needs the same kind of attention from the public that Rudy Loup has gotten.
Okay, anybody else? You know, if I can make a suggestion, and I certainly respect, you know, Mrs. Henley's concerns, but once again. but once again, I think one of the things, if we have the right process, it may serve to educate and eliminate some of the concerns going forward. The bottom line is, whether we like it or not, we're running out of land in Virginia Beach. And you know, it's essential that we create some additional revenue streams that could possibly help relieve some of the residential tax burden on people. This property is, you know, adjacent to a number of developed areas, not that far from a golf course and, you know, some other things. You know, we did have a situation, you know, where years ago, when they went forward with the Punggol Airport, which was right in the middle, you know, isolated and right in the heart of the agriculture. But that turned out to be a very positive amenity and, you know, good neighbor to the people. So, what I recommend is that if we at least, you know, go forward with guarded optimism, but once again, with a strong sense of getting involvement, you know, what's involved, you know, to also, you know, confront the situation about the perk and, you know, what mediation would be done to, you know, address the concerns of, you know, flooding and things. But at least go forward with the public dialogue and, you know, see where it takes us. Does anybody?
Mayor, a quick question on that, just so that I understand my charge coming out of this. When you say public dialogue, would that be to go ahead and, I guess, initiate a potential rezoning matter so that the public knew what they were coming to offer an opinion on? Or are we just gathering public input on the use? The reason I ask is, if I would, if it is the latter, where we're just gathering public input, I would need, I would need to relay to the prospect that there was, that there was, the action that was taken here was not the step forward that would give them a reason to stay in the process. I hate to say it that way, but that would, that would, that would, that would give the other parties in this conversation the comfort that they need to stay in the process or to keep them from stop looking, or to keep them from not looking at other jurisdictions. And so, just, I just want to, full disclosure, I want to make sure everybody knows that if, that if, that we, as we're competing for this, and at the staff level, obviously, as I mentioned earlier, we go where you send us. If the answer is, we're not ready to talk, we're not ready to take that action now, then obviously, we will respect that. But that's where I would have to make the prospect aware of that. And I would expect that they would begin looking for other communities in the Commonwealth.
Okay, Barbara?
I would hope you would at least allow a public hearing before you decide.
Yes, ma'am.
If you tell this person that they may be able to get it, they're going to be spending a lot of money and so forth. And that's not fair if the council doesn't, and the public is opposed. I would think you would at least want a public hearing.
Yes, ma'am, we agree. And so, yes, if the order, if the direction that you gave us was, let's schedule a public hearing to find out where the public is on entering the rezoning process, that's something I could take to them.
Yeah. I think that would be a fair compromise. Is anybody object to at least moving in that direction? You know, the other thing is, you know, to a concern that, you know, we have to let people know that we are open to business to any entity that wants to come in, you know, from the outside and do business in Virginia Beach. And, you know, so at least, you know, let's give it a fair hearing with the intent that, you know, if it goes a certain way. But, you know, Mrs. Henley brought up some questions that got to be, they got to be answered ahead of time.
Yes, sir.
You know, once again, you know, Patrick?
Mr. Mayor? I'm just trying to think how would that work? So, it sounds like the prevailing sense that I'm hearing from council is, is to schedule a public hearing on this proposed opportunity.
Right.
And then, after that public hearing, what are the next steps?
You know, that we would come back, you know, and then, you know, have the meaningful discussion on it, you know, because, you know, once again, this is, you know, as long as, you know, Patrick, as long as there's unanswered questions and concerns and, you know, a good rationale for moving forward, I think, once we get that data, we can have the meaningful conversation and make a decision.
And mayor, I'm assuming the data is just the public feedback and input, right? And then afterwards, after you get, council gets that public input and feedback, is the desire then for Taylor to give this briefing again and then council to give us direction?
I think, I think that would be essential, once the council has all, you know, the data that's out there, the input, but also, you know, the environmental implications and, you know, some other stuff that we could, you know, nip some of the concerns in the bud. Barbara?
Well, I was just wondering about, okay, if this is, it's a sale of public property, what is the requirement? Is it a super majority?
That depends on how, whether any of it was acquired by eminent domain or under threat of eminent domain, and whether it's been put to public use. I think there may be parcels within it that may fall in that category, but I am not prepared to say clearly right now. I'll have to look at that.
See, that's another concern that, you know, we've put on the list and hopefully can get an answer.
Yeah.
Okay, do you have what you need?
I do, mayor. One thing I did want to mention, just because I heard the question from you just a moment ago, one of the things we were careful to do here is, we certainly recognize, recognize the need in this to find, to identify parcels that did not have adjoining residential uses as it relates to neighborhood and things of that nature. We heard loud and clear, I believe it was the, it was the, it was either the Lake Christopher or Christopher Farms neighborhood that came out about the ITA plan, or the, some changes to the potential zoning and proffers within the Innovation Park. And so, important to note, we heard, we heard the communities, the residents of that neighborhood loud and clear when they encouraged us to get further in the ITA with projects like this. And so, I do want to say for the citizens there that expressed concern, we did work to find a parcel without, without adjoining residential uses. And with that, we'll get the rest of your questions answered.
Okay, Patrick. And then Josh.
Mr. Mayor, one last thing, and then I'll exit your deliberations. Knowing that Mr. Adams needs to give a response back to our, to the VDP and also to the anti-describe the letter of interest, what's council's desire and timing for this public hearing? Is it the next formal meeting or like maybe May 9th, or is it some other day?
Do you think it's just better, let's just be on the budget first?
Well, May 9th is not a regular, I mean, it's not we vote on the budget, but second week.
So, maybe May 15th?
Yeah, I think, you know, that would be fair. That, you know, this way, we got a lot on our plate with the budget right now. And, you know, what's the thought there? I'm leaving up the council, I'm just suggesting.
May 15th is two weeks from now, mayor, and we've, and we've briefed the prospect on your, on what is your deliberation schedule and your formal meeting schedule. So, we have no push, we, I don't anticipate that May 15 would be a problem. That's just two weeks from now.
Okay, is that okay with the body?
Yep.
Okey dokey. Yep, Josh?
One question, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, and thanks again for the presentation, Taylor. And I appreciate the councilwoman's insight into the long history of the area. And certainly, her concerns are well received. I wonder aloud, and maybe the city attorney might be able to explain what the, what the real difference is if we were to, if we're soliciting input, I guess, you know, on a concept that really hasn't been fully kind of even developed or explained yet versus starting the rezoning process and using that as an opportunity and vehicle to generate the public input that we're desiring here. So, like what functionally is different there? What public input or engagement or public hearing opportunities might not exist in either of those two scenarios?
Councilmember Shulman, this is probably a nuanced question with some details that staff side and then the city attorney side. If you, if council were to authorize us to go and from this meeting now, today, if council would authorize us to go begin the rezoning process, the public engagement process, what that would look like is that economic development work with, will work with VDP and the prospect to put together more detailed information about the project. And then, that will be presented to Planning Commission where there will be a public opportunity for feedback there. And then, and then, once that process is done, it could then come to council, and council could then ask us to do another public hearing, or council could then consider it, but we would have more details than what we currently have right now, or probably would be able to get for a public hearing on a sixe that the prospect would probably give us.
Yeah, I think it's important to realize that, you know, at this time and stage, you know, we're just not able to divulge a lot of the, you know, the real details about the players and everything. But once again, I think if we deal with the concept first, and then, once we're able, you know, down the line with the concurrence of the, you know, the prospect, you know, I think, you know, this is a good undertaking for the way that we do business in general.
Thank you.
Especially with the emphasis on public engagement. Rocky?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a point of clarification. Mr. Adams, you said Lake Christopher or Christopher Farms? It was Christopher Farms that came here.
Thank you, sir.
The Lake Christopher is a proud neighborhood that stands in District One, and we're glad to have them. It's one of the pillars in District One, and it's one of the good neighborhoods we have. So, point of clarification on that.
And in fact, the mayor lives there, has absolutely nothing to do with Mr. Adams.
So, to further respond to Mr. Shulman's question, there is a specific requirement or guideline in the state code with respect to information that has to be provided in advance of the statutorily required public hearing on the zoning change. So, that, and it basically requires a description of the proposed use and whatever proffers may be associated with the zoning change, et cetera, et cetera. So, there are, the planning staff would come forward and ensure you are provided the state required minimum amount of information in connection with the zoning change. This public information session is whatever you define it as. And from the presentation you've heard today, I think it's probably likely that, based upon the requirements of the offerer and the confidentiality they're requesting, it would be less information available at this first public meeting than would ultimately be available when you take up, when the planning commission and this council then take up a formal rezoning application.
Thank you. And I think that's, and I ask that for my own edification and for ours, but also for the publics, because I want, I want to make sure we're all prepared for, you know, just the level, surface level conversation and what the reaction might be to that, and as opposed to a conversation that involves a little bit more detail, where people can actually start wrestling with these concepts a little bit, you know, and think about them. And I applaud, I guess, in some ways, the council for making sure that we can talk about this now and make sure that the public knows that this has been presented to us and that we're taking a thoughtful approach about whether or not to go forward, considering it is a very sizable investment.
Yes, sir.
And, but there are also some real concerns in terms of the developmental aspects of it.
Yeah. Thank you for that, councilmember. And mayor, that actually took me to one more quick question, very quick, I promise. Ms. Henley has a number of committees and commissions that meet in her district that I'm sure would like to have as much information on this as we can provide, as quickly as we can provide it. With your permission, we would like to, if Ms. Henley was willing, we would, where that creates probably some difficult evenings for my team and for me, we do think it's important to be as open as we possibly can be and inform the public to the extent that we can. So, we, I would ask your permission to be available, even in advance of the public hearing, to speak to civic leagues and to community groups that are interested in this matter, if that's okay.
Yeah, I think that would be essential. Barbara?
And the District Two Forum is this Thursday at 5:15.
Yes, ma'am, I thought of that while I was standing here. And so, I just wanted to make sure we were okay to participate.
Well, I think, you know, since this is a major change in policy and the way we do things, you know, the more deliberate and, you know, not rush into it and do it, you know, in a sequential manner that, you know, really, you know, the idea of anything we ever do is to get to a win-win situation. So, you know, let's go ahead and proceed on that. Thank you.
Thank you all.
So, mayor, just to wrap up, so basically, what I'm getting from council is, work on a public hearing, and then it's May 15?
May 16th.
May 15.
The city.
16, May 16. Oh, May 16, okay. All right, so work for a public hearing, May 16th. And after May 16th, Taylor's going to give another briefing similar to this.
Yep.
And then, council will give us further guidance on where they want us to go. And then thereafter, we'll know where we're going.
Yep. Yeah, and then hopefully, by then, the prospect, you know, will be able to get the information we need.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay, Patrick, your show.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, this is the last day of presentations on the fiscal year '24 proposed budget. We'll start with the city treasurer, and the city treasurer's office will give a counselor update on her proposed fiscal year '23, '24 budget.
Hello, good afternoon. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mayor Dyer, vice mayor, city council members. Appreciate the opportunity to present the treasurer's office budget today. We have 76.6 full-time employees. That has been a consistent number for a number of years now, with a proposed budget of about $7.9 million. Most of our budget is comprised of our staffing. We're very staff-centric. And the other parts of our budget, obviously, are to get the bills out in the mail, our postage, our printing, our paper envelopes. And then, we have obviously some minor operating expenses that support a budget. Our budget has grown about 5%. It's a small increase that is comprised of a little bit of salaries, a little bit of IT software, subscription costs, and the majority of that is regarding postage to get our bills out in the mail. A little bit about the city treasurer's office, because we have a number of new council members out here. And if anyone would like to stop by, I know a number of you have stopped by the office to take a look around and see what our operations are there. But I welcome anyone else that would like to join me down there and look around. But just to let y'all know what we do down there, we've processed almost 2.5 million payments in our five locations throughout the city. This includes about 20,000 payments where customers call our payment line and speak directly to one of our cashiers to have their payment processed over the phone. So, I think citizens really appreciate having one-on-one service with cashiers to work them through what they owe and how to make payments and any other questions that they may have. We continue to expand our online capabilities, where we took about 1.2 million online payments last year. And as of today, the bills that can be paid online are personal property, real estate, parking tickets, red light citations, school bus stoparm citations, school board invoices, the police department application testing fees, business license and trust taxes that we work with Commissioner of the Revenue on. And we're currently working on implementing being able to pay FOIA requests from the police department online. Historically, we're seeing about 50% of our taxpayer payments are electronic, and that continues to increase. About 25% continue to be mailed, and we have 10% to 15% where people come to our offices and locations in person, or they're calling over the phone to make payment. The treasurer's office has taken more than 166,000 telephone calls over the past year, and we've mailed more than 1.1 million taxpayer correspondences. So, we're definitely dealing So, we're definitely dealing with our citizens of Virginia Beach. We bill and collect for many items and on behalf of many city departments. We're responsible for real estate, personal property, trust taxes such as meals, lodging, admissions, parking tickets, animal control disposal fees, impound fees, school board items such as overdue lunch balances, and accounts payable items like lost textbooks or damaged Chromebooks, red light cameras, school bus stop arms, police department, false alarms for commercial and residential DUI cost recovery, traffic engineering, fire department for inspections and permits, human services for FOIA requests, facilities management for the rent and lease of city property, the farmer's market pays their rent to us, and cell towers that are leased from the city for the property, public works for access basin draining, animal licenses, court costs fines, who we work with the Commonwealth Attorney, restitution, we also work with Commonwealth Attorney and the Clerk of the Circuit Court, housing and neighborhood preservation for their liens. We also assist with collections for human services, Community Service Board, Parks and Rec, Public Utilities, Risk Management, Sheriff's Office, the list goes on and on. So, if any other city departments reach out to you and need help with their collections, my office is happy to facilitate that process. Regarding our changes in the past year, I think it's worth mentioning again, I talked about this at the last budget meeting, but our Kempsville office relocated last August. We're now in the Kempsville Shopping Center, Kempsville Crossing Shopping Center. It's at the corner of Kempsville Road and Centerville Turnpike. And when we first moved, we weren't seeing a lot of our old customers coming to this office, but now that we've been there for a while, I think they've got accustomed to the change. So, this office continues to be, along with our Thalia office, one of our busiest offices outside of the municipal center.
Seven districts, one area. Just outside.
This year, we're handing, handling our fifth annual unclaimed virtual event on May 24th and 25th. Information about this event will be included with the personal property and real estate bills that are scheduled to be mailed out this Friday. This is the fifth time we've had this, and it's in conjunction with the Virginia Department of Treasury, and we assist citizens in finding funds such as unclaimed cashed, uncashed refund checks, dormant bank accounts, insurance policy proceeds, and we've had a great success. It's nice to work with citizens to give their money back instead of collecting it for a change. So, in year one, when we first held this event, we helped facilitate the return of $226,000 to our citizens. Year two was $184,000, year three was $94,000, and last year was $360,000 back to our citizens. In, in this current fiscal year, City Council previously approved a CIP for our office to replace our outdated remittance processing equipment. This is the equipment that scans all of our coupons and checks and creates files to send to our accounts receivables to post the payments in our systems, and then deposits the check to the bank via electronic files. So, on a non-tax time day, this is about $1 million that goes to the bank through this process, and during our tax periods, it can be tens of millions of dollars. So, I wanted to thank City Council for their support for this software endeavor. It, it helps create redundancies. Our first machine went live on April 11, and our second terminal went live just this past Friday. So, thank you for your support. In fact, Councilwoman Wooton came down last week, and she was able to see the first machine that was implemented in action. As far as initiatives underway, the City Treasurer's Office is very much driven by technology. We continue to work with our IT department and utilize our own programming staff to rewrite many older legacy in-house applications. We appreciate the support the IT gives us and their commitment to help us maintain our technological operations, and this too serves our citizens. We have completed rewrites of our bankruptcy tracking program, return checks application. We're currently working on our check writing and positive pay programs and our budget tracking application. We're in the requirement stage for rewriting our animal license application and working with the Commissioner of Revenue and IT on our state and estimated income programs. We have many other small applications in the pipeline. Over the years, our office has developed many ancillary programs, so we're working to make sure that we stay current with the new IT standards in place. I mention all of this because our office, like I said, is very driven by our software programs, and the investment in these technological initiatives for our community of interest, which is the commissioner and the real estate assessor, is critical, and we also need IT's commitment to support them. And regarding that, I do have a CIP request that perhaps you'll hear about in a later presentation today, but I wanted to take an opportunity to talk about it just a little bit. I'm requesting money for an e-billing CIP. This project would enable citizens to receive their tax bills electronically with the potential for growing savings related to postage, paper, printing, and envelopes. And as you saw at the beginning of this presentation, a tidbit of my budget has increased because of postage, paper, envelopes. So, we're hoping that over time that we see some sort of savings as the adoption of this program increases for those things, and we can send those items electronically. It would be something that the taxpayer could voluntarily do, and we have seen a lot of issues with the United States Postal Service and their lack of reliable delivery. And when I say that, it means getting the bill to the taxpayer, but it also means receiving the payment back from the taxpayer. A lot of our customer service phone calls are related to those type of items. So, I really see this is a net positive to our citizens, as well as a potential cost savings into the future. I also believe that this project and this request has become an expectation from our citizens, especially our younger generation or those that have had previous problems with mail delivery. So, I would certainly appreciate your consideration in reviewing the CIPs the IT will probably present a little bit later today. So, does anyone have any questions regarding the budget?
Any questions at all?
Yes, ma'am.
Julia and then Sabrina.
I just wanted to ask, with this new CIP, you will still continue, even though you're looking at the younger generation, for the seniors who may still be technically challenged, still have some snail mail?
Yes, ma'am. It will be a voluntary program, so the citizen would have to provide their email address and initiate the process to turn off paper billing and then change it over to electronic. So, anyone who doesn't initiate that process would still receive bills in the mail through the snail mail.
Okay, and I do have one other that came to me from District Four. I'm sure you're aware of it, so I wanted just a little bit more clarity. I had where a family, two of them, lived out in L and J Gardens, where they brought the complaint because they wanted to be able to save property, what was it called, Paper Street in that area, and were unable to even pay the, what was on there, there was delayed taxes. And I think it went out to be auctioned, and it wasn't able to be saved because they had gone that far on there. What is that process where you have, do you have just one auctioneer, or what happens with people in that sort of situation?
So, once a parcel is more than three years delinquent, in that particular case, I believe they were 12 or more years delinquent. I can't remember that.
Because the people had died.
Yes, and so, we reach out to see if there are any heirs to the property, to see if we can collect payment that way, and if we cannot, then we offer it for sale. What we find in situations like that is when we look back at the past and the city has subdivided property, that there are these little ancillary properties that get stuck in the middle, and then no one is, is, in this case, the property was taken care of physically, but in many of these cases, the properties aren't taken care of physically and become eyesores in the neighborhood. If you'd like to discuss that particular situation further, I'm happy to do so, though.
Okay, yeah, it's over now, but I always wondered, you know, 12 years, the family had died, nobody, but they did take care of that property.
The neighbors did.
The neighbors took care of it, then they wanted to purchase it, and at that point, when I got to it, it was like the next week for the auction, which, you know, made it really tough.
Right.
But just for future, if people in that neighborhood have something like this, you know, when I go to the civic league, I can kind of explain it to them better. So, I look forward to sitting, you know, learning more about it.
Absolutely, and there was, there was a few other properties that came up like this too, and just for this type of process. And it is my process to engage as many city departments that I can in that process, for which I did, but I'm happy to share if there's a particular property in a particular district that might be relevant to, for you to have conversations about.
Okay, thank you so much for your presentation.
Sure.
Sabrina?
Thank you. Thank you, Lee, for your presentation, and I, one of the reasons I came down to the office was to ask more questions about the e-billing CIP request, because I thought that it was interesting. I thought that it would be a cost savings for the city, and I think that as we, as a city, look at more ways to implement cost-saving ideas like yourself and your department, I think that we will see a substantial impact in the city's overall budget. So, I do want to say thank you for highlighting that, and being proactive to highlight something that can be so cost-effective to the city. And I did get a chance to see that, the contraption, the scanning, and it was, I mean, it's a beautiful piece of equipment, and it saves money. So, yes, I did get a chance to see that.
Thank you for stopping by.
And to see those taxpayer dollars in action. So, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else. Hey, Lee, thank you very much, and thank you and your wonderful crew for the great job you did.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Commissioner O'Reilly, and his team, Commissioner O'Reilly, this is your 24.
You're welcome, Phil. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good to be here. Councilmembers, nice to see you. Uh-oh, am I the one operating here? No, good, thank you. So, thank you for the opportunity to address you about FY 2024 budget requests. So, if you go to slide, okay, let's see, we got here, Slide 2, you'll see that we have 64.93 FTEs operate under one division, where we've integrated operations for discovery, assessment, compliance, and taxpayer assistance. Under the proposed budget, you can see that the general operations, 97% are just over $6 million, and DMV Select is at 172,000. Under incoming, under revenue, we have a different number there at 150,000 on DMV Select. We just got that last week from the 172, so we'll smooth that with budget. I'm sure that we can clear that up. The 870,000 is, let me see where we are, the state money that we're getting, 14% is funded by the state for salaries on 30, 35 FTEs on 50% of the state salary equivalent, and that is for state tax issues, administration assistance, and state income taxes, and to fortify the operation of the office. The remaining 84% you can see is, is provided by the city. The expenses are listed at 389,000, and that's office supplies and equipment, postage, cigarette stamps that we issue, and continuing education. We also have a little over half million dollars on, on subscriptions for technology, such as Granicus, which provides us assistance with state, not state income, with short-term rentals, and PCI, who is their primary provider of data management. The rest, and the big green piece of the pie, is personnel, 86%. So, our operating budget for FY '24 is up 1.6%. You can see, this is, the change is up basically because of the 5% merit that you provided to employees last year and cost of living increase. So, some highlights that I'd like to go through with a little more detail, and initiatives that we had during calendar year '22. I think you, all that have worked with me for many years, know that I, I really want to get as much automation and online transactions in, in the office as possible, and we've been really beginning to hit our stride now. 26% of business license payments are renewed or made online. That's 16 million of the 60.5 million in business license revenue. 19% of business license renewals, every year, they, they do renew around 30,000 accounts, and 6,100 of those 30,000 accounts are renewing. So, we'd like to get that up a little more, but we've been doing it for two years now, three years now, excuse me, so we encourage people to do it. 37% of meals tax payments, or 33 million out of the 87, almost 88 million, comes in online. This is, it really is much easier for the trustee and the restaurant owner that is, they can set it up, and a lot of the points that Lee made about depending on whether or not someone gets mail, or honestly, the less human hands that are touching it and the more it's automated, the faster these processes go, and that's just the way it is. We'd rather have the human interaction providing service and listening to what the taxpayers are saying and seeing if we can accommodate them or direct them in a better way. 67% of lodging tax payments, 67% are paid online. So, that's about 33 million of the 49 million. And then, personal property appeals, I think you remember from decades ago, we had lines down in front of Courthouse Drive in front of City Hall. The first year we did it, we had a couple of lap tops on a picnic table out underneath the tree, and we moved it to the lot across the street by the Buffington House, we moved it up by the jail, and then we eventually moved it to the ball fields, and we had quite an operation. But when COVID came along, that had to change, and we are able to accomplish this online now, and it's, it's just amazing how well it works and how compliant the taxpayers are with this. We had 16,339 online property appeals with an average savings of $124. It's, it works, and, you know, we capture and update the mileage annually, so if someone has extraordinarily high mileage, they don't have to keep coming back. We can just adjust it, send the information to the treasurer, and the treasurer gets it straight in the bill before it goes out. And we confirm the condition of appeals by sworn attestations and audits. So, we really feel like we've gotten a grip on this, and this has freed up some of the labor that went into effect when we were doing all of this outside. It was kind of fun, but it was a, it really was a, this is a much more efficient operation. Senior and disabled tax, and disabled veteran, excuse your, excuse me, senior, disabled, and veteran tax relief. I know this is... I know this is one of the things that you guys have really been trying to watch because it's grown. You'll see that 27, let's see, 27.6 million, or 11.8 million in senior and disabled tax relief, and 15.8 million in veteran tax relief was issued last year. Average savings, a little over 2,500 for seniors or disabled taxpayers, and almost 3,900 for veterans. Now, there's, there's some breakdowns in there that I think it would be important just to give you some perspective. There are four, there are just under 5,000 senior or disabled qualified taxpayers that get an exemption between 20% and 100% and/or a tax freeze. There are 4,106 vets that get a full exemption on real estate. There are 14 surviving spouses of veterans killed in action. They, their break is no greater than the average assessed value of a single-family home in Virginia Beach. There are two that have qualified for surviving spouse of a first responder killed in the line of duty, and that's no greater than the average assessed value of a single-family home, same thing. Now, pending, based on the General Assembly's actions in the last session, there is a possibility you all will be considering the surviving spouse of a veteran killed in the line of duty. And I think the law provides that you all would perhaps be able to provide a lower rate on that. But we're prepared to provide your information as necessary to make any, for any of those considerations. Next is business tax relief. Last December, the city council increased the minimum tax threshold on the B-Pole to two, from 100,000 to 200,000. And I'm grateful for that action. I think that that was a move in the right direction. That saved just under 2,200 accounts, an average of $418.29. That, I've spoken to many of you about this, and you've heard me in the past, COVID hit small businesses extraordinarily, much more difficult, with much more difficulty to adapt than many, most large businesses. You know, they're, they had to cut employees, supplies were cut, needless to say, their customer base was cut, they had to close, they had to adapt. Many of them got support, federal support, and this council took some action on, on some, some, it suspended the meals tax for two months. It spent, it suspended the alcohol tax, or the ABC seat license tax for one year, and that helped many of the businesses in the city. But we really got out of whack where the traditional 75% of our businesses qualifying for this minimum threshold got down to 64%. So this, this helped. I sent you a letter recently, last week, that would point out that if we could get that threshold to 250,000, that would get us to the 75% traditional number of small businesses, or businesses that are considered small businesses, at the minimum license threshold. That would, that would include an additional 754 businesses, and it would save them an average of $670 in that group between 200 and 250,000. Next, city council suspended, in the spring, a year ago this time, the business tangible property tax for the first two years of qualifying businesses. Specifically, last year was the first year that was in effect, and 71 accounts qualified for an average savings of $808.25. So that, that's another good thing that city council has done to help small businesses get moving, or small and new businesses get moving. Let's see. Under personal property, I really appreciate working with you last year to implement a 75% ratio on the personal property assessments. It's my job to find the property and find the fair market value, and, you know, the council has the prerogative of setting the tax rate, but rather than changing the rate, the law provides that if the commissioner and the council work together, we can come up with a ratio. And that ratio was 75% of the assessed value, or the market value last year, or the, and the average savings per taxpayer was $127.94. Okay. The, again, this year, working with, with the Budget Office, and I've spoken to many of you guys on council about this, we're, I think the intent, or we have implemented, excuse me, an 85% ratio on the personal property assessments for this calendar year. And that will be an average savings of $49.54. The Budget Office did consult with us on this, this ratio, if you will, and, you know, I would have liked to have seen it at 18. They, they were looking at 10, but honestly, I think, I appreciate that we were able to compromise on it, and we settled at 15%, so it's 85%. Some other initiatives underway, the treasurer talked about some improvements we're making. One of them is, we're updating the state income tax tracking of returns. While many people file online, there's still many people that will file through our office and get taxpayer assistance in filing, and we track them coming in and going out to Richmond. Also, the, there's basically a rewrite or an update to a .net environment on state income tax estimated in tax dues, and we're working with IT and the treasurer on that. Next thing is something called trickle feed, and this is online adjustments to cashiering, online adjustments to assessments update every 15 minutes. And I think I've been along, around long enough that you know that I think that online is the way to go, online, not inline. And one other note, that working with you guys on this DMV Select that we have in the City Hall, I mean, our DMV lines are under five minutes. Everybody says, "Don't tell anybody, keep the secret." But we, we keep, we keep moving along and we keep, I mean, we really have a great environment now to provide this. In the old City Hall, we may do, but it was, it was a little bit of musical chairs and moving around. So we appreciate that and that working relationship there. Finally, we're working on, with a vendor right now, to implement in calendar year '24, the online filing of business tangible returns. I spoke with Councilman Hochland about this on the way up here today, and this will do, be another way that businesses can file online, and it will make it easier for them, rather than returning a paper file, a paper return that has to be manually filled out, and quite frankly, it has to be re-indexed every year. So this will, this will help, and we're working with the vendor to reach that, that point now. So I appreciate the help that you've provided at the office over the years, and the attention you've given to taxpayers, and I just hope we can continue to work together. I'll provide you the data, and let's try to help small businesses as best we can. If you have any questions on...
Any questions? Hey, Sabrina?
I just have feedback, thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation and highlighting the initiatives that you've taken time to ensure that folks like our seniors and disabled veterans get tax relief. It's certainly very, is substantial, and it's something that the public should be aware of, as well as your continued, I would say, I don't want to say fight, but perseverance for business, businesses, business owners, to ensure that they also get tax relief. And I remember you, last year, coming back advocating to ensure that we increase that threshold, and I hope that's something that we will look at, to increase it a bit more to the 250,000, where you say it needs to go to increase more relief for our business owners. I think that's really important, also that you're highlighting that our business owners are still recovering from the pandemic. It's not over, essentially. I think I read somewhere that the average business would take at least 10 years to recover. So these types of efforts are still needed, and I commend you for continuing to be, to persevere and to continue to fight and lift up that banner for the business owner. Also, one of the initiatives that you're highlighting, the online filing of business tangible property returns, I think that's an excellent idea. All of the ideas are, are great, but I know as I'm online and I'm working through the system, this would be, I think, very rewarding for business owners, so they don't have to mail that document in, they can just file it, because I know myself, it's easy, once you do everything online, and then if you still have that document that you have to mail in or turn in, you can forget that. And so if everything's all together, online and comprehensive, it just makes things easier. And I'm a champion of making things easier for the taxpayers, making things easier for our business. So just wanted to provide that feedback and highlight those areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara, and then Rosemary.
On our real estate tax relief programs for senior, disabled, and veterans, you said that, is it in the wording of the ordinance that we need to make a change in order to make more of the surviving spouses, military spouses eligible? I know that we had three speakers at our public hearing. What is it, the way now it says they have to be killed in action, whereas if it's changed to in line of duty? Is that what we need to do?
That's, that's the option that's going to be, the local option that will be available, yes. And it was, there's lots of definitions that have gone into either constitutional amendments or the statute that the General Assembly passes. Killed in action, line of duty, died of wounds, things like that. And we have to consider it in the narrow language that the law is written. And so I've worked with Delegate Knight in the past to expand that and include died of wounds, for instance, is one of the things. But I think you're asking, how are we getting this word out, and how can we do it better?
I think they were asking us to change our ordinance because they are not eligible with the wording we have, and maybe somewhat, okay...
Okay, Patrick.
Mr. Mayor, I think Dana will probably say it better than I have, but inside the proposed budget, we've set it up so council can make a decision on that as part of reconciliation to give us a guidance on what you want to set the rate at for those groups that had line of duty debts but weren't killed in action. I think Dana will probably say it better than I will.
Yeah, that's in the works.
So, so in the tax world, there's a few constructs. One's an exemption, and then the other one is a tax classification. If there is an exemption, they have to amend the Virginia Constitution. So for the disabled veterans, for the, the killed in action, and then for line of duty, each one of those was the result of an amendment to the Virginia Constitution. Last year, the General Assembly with the surviving spouses of service members that died in the line of duty, that was added to the Virginia Code as a tax classification. If there's a classification, it separates the property that fits in that classification from the general classification of property, and then it falls to the city council to adopt a rate that applies to that tax classification. So you may be familiar in your real estate levy ordinance, there's a classification for energy-efficient buildings, there's a tax classification for the Virginia Historic Landmarks Registry. So those methods of tax relief is by lowering the rate that applies to that band of property separate from the general tax rate. And so the existing construct about killed in action and died of wounds, that's not exactly what we're talking about with the surviving spouses of, killed in line of duty. It's in your real estate ordinance.
Nothing's simple, right?
Well, interestingly, it's, I think, a choice that the General Assembly makes, because amending the Constitution takes separate enactment, enactments and intervening election, and then a referendum. So they're really looking at like a four-year process to do a change to the Constitution versus the classification, which they can do in any session, one and done.
Okay, well, you'll guide us on that, but I think you also mentioned, we do have this exemption for our first responders to die because of line of duty action, so that's already... We have it worded the way it needs to be.
Yes, that one, that one, actually, the exemption required local action, and this body took local action before the effective date of, of the constitutional amendment. So yeah, that's, that's the maximum extent allowable by that piece of the Virginia Constitution.
Okay, very good. And we do have the adjustment that's made to the senior, just as a part of our budget process, so that gets done automatically. And it, but it's also, it's difficult, because I know we get emails from people who go down to your office to apply for the exemption, but there's something in the wording that causes them to not be eligible. I think one that we got recently, I suppose it's in the portion where people are allowed to have not more than $350,000 in assets, but if somebody does have a trust that's left in such a way that they can't touch it, and all they get is the income from it, they still aren't eligible because of that trust that's out there. Is there anything that we can do to overcome that?
So the Virginia Constitution was amended, I believe, in 2014. Anyways, questions of what's the income and what's the net worth is something the city council can work with. And so you may recall, we took out a reverse mortgage, and then certain governmental disability income, as those just don't go into income calculation anymore. So if there was a desire of this council to take something out of the net worth calculation, we would do an ordinance to affect that change.
Yeah, if you have, if you're getting a lot of feedback on particular items...
We can sit, we can sit down with the city attorney and, and you and, you know, we're...
Something out there that somebody has that they can't touch, and all they get is the income from it, I think it's only fair that we adjust it so it, it affects what they actually have. So if you have any recommendations for us on that...
Okay, we'll review that, and maybe we'll just set up in a time where we can review it together, because you've been very active in, in dealing with this issue over the years, and I appreciate that.
There's all kinds of little angles to everything, we just have to find them all. Okay, if you would.
Okay, Rosemary.
I think there's a lot of widespread support to help the surviving spouses that came to speak last week. I've talked to Kevin about it as well, and he did say that the ordinance was, has been approved by, you know, it's all been approved by the General Assembly, so it'll be a very easy thing for us to do. My question is, you seem to know how many people are in the different categories of how many people would this affect, and, and what's the budget implication?
Oh, well, I don't have a number, are you saying the surviving spouses of...
Kevin may know the answer to that.
Vice President, it'll be about 20 people, and it'll be an innocuous amount of the budget, it'll be budget thus, more or less.
But we'll still need to put it in the reconciliation.
Correct. We already have it penciled and airmarked for council to look at to set the rate.
Right. I think it's kind of like the boat tax where you have to, you can't just do away with it, but you put like .000001 or something, and it ends up not being related.
Yeah, it has to be discovered and accounted for, because rates can always change, different councils and...
Yeah, and I, you know, thank the council for the recognition of those survivors that came in front of us last week, and they were heard.
Well, I just want to personally thank you all for working with me over the last several years on, on getting some of these things done to help small businesses. And I just, I think it's important to realize that, you know, I appreciate... And I just, I think it's important to realize that, you know, I appreciate that y'all are dealing with a lot of requests, but there is a synergy between the, the tax assessor and the taxpayer. And I feel like I've got a pretty good touch for what's going on out there. And I do think that while COVID is generally over and we're not dealing with the intense effects of it, there are residual effects on small businesses that, and there are residual things going on with us where we're not at that 75% where we've been ever since Governor Allen, up until three years ago. So it's, it's one of these things that I just think we all need to pay attention to making adjustments where we can, but I appreciate any consideration y'all would give for that.
Hey, thanks, Phil. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, the real estate assessor will come and propose on our office's proposed budget for fiscal year '24.
Welcome.
Thank you. I know I couldn't handle the mouse, so I bought my mouse girl. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. I am here this afternoon to present the proposed FY '23, '24 budget of the real estate So our department is staffed with 35 full-time members. We have a budget, a proposed budget of over, just a little bit over 3.4 million of those 35 positions. I currently have three vacancies. Also tracked for budget purposes is the Board of Equalization figures. They are not governed by the real estate assessor. They are forum members that are appointed by circuit court judges but are tracked under my budget for, again, for budget purposes. Our operating budget, when I compared it to the '22, '23 amended values that we had, I'm pretty much flatlined from last year. I'm down in personnel costs. That's due to vacancies, and typically, we've had a process of downgrading positions. So when a senior member leaves, I've been filling with entry level positions. And then operating expenses are similar to the treasurer. The majority of my operating expenses are going to be mailings and postage for that. And the Board of Equalization is flatlined to what they were last year. Of my budget, similar, again, to a lot of other departments, about 90% of my budget is, is due to personnel, or is expended to personnel. Some of the major challenges that I'm facing this year is staffing. We are still having difficulties filling our positions. Some of that is due to salaries. I've had two candidates that I've selected in the last several months that I just couldn't reach their minimum requirements for salaries and had to let them go and put those out again. We also face competition from other jurisdictions. It's really difficult to find seasoned appraisers or people with assessing experience to fill our vacancies. So as I said before, we've been going through a process where we've downgraded once a senior appraiser leaves and we're filling with entry level. And I got to say, I, I love our entry level people that are coming in. They bring such energy, and they're certainly not afraid to voice their ideas and opinions and are bringing in energy to our staff. My senior personnel are doing a great job of mentoring and training, but it certainly takes a lot of personal, professional development and time from my supervisors to put into training these new people and bringing them up to speed. Just for historic purposes, we did have an independent study done on our department to see about our business processes and seeing how well we function. Back in 2007, that survey recommended that we needed another additional four positions to really fully staff and bring up to speed. We haven't met those additional four positions yet. And then back in 2011, we lost four appraisers due to budgeting. We've had one of those restored since then. And then each year, I realize it's difficult to budget, but each year, we've typically asked for additional staff and have not received funding for that as of yet. Another major challenge we have is technology, and I hope our IT department doesn't take offense to this. It's no, it's no take on them. It's typically more, we just have some outdated software and some things that we need to work on. Right now, we currently, we've been working on this project for a couple of years, but we do not have the ability to create digital maps and do digital map analysis in our department as of yet. We have a platter. I can create really pretty paper maps and put some limited information on it, but that digital analysis, I think, is really important to letting us do our in-depth work that we need in order to create accurate assessments and, and correct our data, to work on data changes. Another challenge we have is that right now, because of our dated software, I would say a majority of our in-depth analysis has to be done outside of that software system. We do a lot of work on spreadsheets. Our income and expense data is on spreadsheets, and then we have to port those into information and results back into the system. Our system was put into place back in 2007. We've had to updates and some patches since then, but it's really not allowing us to take advantage of some of the, the new tools that are out there and available now. Another challenge is we have a lot of system processes that have a lot of manual entry required. Our real estate system, I think you've heard, is a combination of use between the real estate assessor, the treasurer, and the commissioner of revenue. There's some workflows between them. In order to generate the land book or a correct tax bill, it starts with a real estate assessment, and then there's some special exemptions or tax credits that are put on from there, and then we go over and create the bill. All of that is handled in the system that was implemented in 2007. And it, there's a lot of manual entry that makes it difficult to follow the workflow in some of those, and then also to make sure that we're reconciling and we've accounted for all of those pieces at the end of the book. Our permit processing process, we developed it some time ago. We have an Acela SQL database, and then our data is SQL-based. It's, it's kind of a difficult process to import that permit information into my system so that I can accurately reflect values for new construction and permitted work. It just needs some time and dedication to probably make that a better, better flow. And then the generation of our notices also takes some manual entry, and I think that could be cleaned up with some, some decent software. And again, the difficulty here is that we typically are finding trouble finding the dedication because of time and resources, staff, to get all these processes worked out and put into place. And again, our older system. Some of our initiatives that are underway, again, my staff is my most important resource, and I can't really do a great job until I have a staff that's trained to do that analysis and then the tools, that they have the proper tools to get there. I didn't request additional personnel this year because I intended to focus on technology and supporting those efforts on the front, but I'll be back next year. We're kind of getting creative now, so we're focusing on developing our staff that we have in place now, our younger members, and getting things set up so that I have business processes and cross-training that's developed. I've also been working with human resources and trying to get creative with maybe looking at some of my vacant positions and reclassifying them and trying to create additional valuation positions from some vacant clerical positions to see if that'll work. I've also started looking into, possibly looking to see if we can hire an outside consulting service for analytics that would help us. You know, I might need analysis for a project that might happen once a year, but I don't have the budget that it would take to hire a trained analytic person that could be on staff full-time. So maybe a consulting service could help me with some of those special projects and maybe implement some of this new software. I also, the, the standard equipment that the city has for employees are desktops. There's a cost to the department if you want to upgrade from a desktop to a laptop. I've been trying to find the funding to do that because I really think it's important for my staff to have those laptops. It's great, it, it really helps the systematic, the, the remote work. It allows them to do that remote work more easily. And also, I think, because our software is dated, I have a client-based software, which means that that software has to be loaded on every machine in order for us to function and do our duties. So it makes sense to me to have those loaded on laptops, which I could port out of the building should there be a disaster in the building that I couldn't get in. We could have all those laptops out, and we wouldn't miss work with that. So I have 22 laptops, and I'm working on trying to find the funding later to replace the rest. I am happy to say that our mobile assessor, which is a field data collection tool, was funded by council last year. Thank you. Newly implemented, we're still getting up to speed on it, but it allows us to update our data and information directly from the field. My FY '24 budget includes monies to support that product coming on with licensing and support fees. I'm also happy to say that my mapping, my mapping search is over, I hope. We're in the contracting stages of a spatial analysis mapping tool that I hope to have implemented shortly that'll, again, help with that data and reclassifications. Also, our property search tool, which is currently available, where citizens can go in and look for information about their properties and sales. That tool is being sunsetted with the update of our website, so we needed to find a replacement for property search, and I'm happy to say that we're contracting and doing the final negotiations on that tool. Excuse me. And then finally, but most importantly, is the software modernization we keep talking about. We had a CIP that was previously funding, that was approved beginning in 2019. Because of the pandemic and some resource issues, we haven't really been able to get a start on it till now, and I'm really happy to say that I just found out recently that the RFP, just for the initial analysis work on what it's going to take for resources and money to get to this modernization, that RFP went out Friday for response. So we're making great progress on that. Oops, excuse me. So in conclusion, for FY '24, my focus was on technology, implementing and supporting those new tools. We're going to not ask for new staff, but we're going to focus on training and development on what we have. I'm looking at research, and researching opportunities for maybe an outside consultant for analysis. And as with all of this going on, we're going to continue to provide the best service and support for the city and the department that we can. Thank you.
Hey, any questions? Amelia and then Sabrina.
Just wanted to ask, you mentioned about the technology, and you brought it back again. What's the cost that you're looking at for getting the others that you don't have?
So the, that will be a part of this RFP that's, that we'll get a response to. We, we need to hire a firm that will come in and say, here's the resource, that will take a look at our initial system that we have and see what it'll take to really, what we're missing, and what it'll take to upgrade to the, the most current platform of that system. So this analysis work will give us the results of both resources, time, and cost to make that improvement.
We should get that before we.
Yes.
And I'm glad you're proactive about disaster.
Thank you.
That everything's ready.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sabrina and then Barbara.
Thank you so much for providing us with this valuable information. I remember, I believe it was last year, you were moving into this position, and you're doing such a great job in executing.
Thank you.
Your job.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your support.
Absolutely, absolutely. I know that you are focusing on technology, but I did want to ask you a question about the impact where you lost the four appraisers in 2011, and only one was restored in 2020. What type of impact does that have when you're only working with that one person that's restored as an appraiser?
So the International Association of Assessing Officers is, is kind of the standard that tells us, in order to run a productive, efficient office, here's kind of how many parcels each appraiser should be responsible for. We're well above the average that that takes right now. So what that means is that, actually, currently, I think we were just looking the other day, because my supervisors need some time freed up for training and development, they're not able to carry a full load of parcels, and it's resulting in each of my appraisers having been responsible for the valuation of about 10,000 parcels apiece. I think industry standards are more like 5,000 to 6,000. There's a formula that you can generate for each of that. What that means is that not only are we responsible for that annual reassessment, but we also process permits and new construction, we handle appeals from homeowners, we validate and research and analyze sales. We get all of that done, but it's very difficult, again, when we're talking about looking at improving business processes, it's difficult to devote the time to figuring out how to make that a better day. And my appraisers are working hard. There's not a lot of free time at all.
I appreciate you sharing that.
Thank you.
I was thinking about that earlier today and what type of impact that must have. So I appreciate you sharing that. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Barbara?
Well, that may be related a little. You have three vacancies.
Yes, ma'am.
And I, I sort of get the drift that maybe there's something about those positions that particularly makes it hard to fill those positions, the way they are framed. Is that the problem?
You know, the difficulty is that three of those positions, I should say, I filled one position with an appraiser, three that I was one of, outside of those, that I was very fortunate to get, but he's relocating from Fairfax, so I had to wait three months to get him. And I've had a number of people that are applying for positions that are out of the area, and I'm going to move to Virginia Beach, but I'm not there yet, that are qualified. The vacancies that I have now, I'm currently advertising a supervisor, real estate supervisor position, which is difficult to fill. I have two clerical positions open, and believe it or not, the candidate, those are two of the candidates that I just couldn't fill. I couldn't meet the salary requirements for what they wanted to come in for. And it's one of those positions that I'm working with HR now to see if I can reclassify into another appraisal position to bring that 10,000 parcel per appraiser count down somewhat, because I think we can handle the clerical work with one less position there. So we're trying to get creative.
Well, I know we keep hearing about, we have so many vacancies, but maybe there are issues that we can adjust, adjust the classification or something to be able to hire people. It sounds to me like maybe it's just that we have some hard-to-fill positions. It's not that, that we're not out there needing these people, and I think that's what we kind of get feedback on, well, you have so many vacancies, why are you even showing that in the budget? But we see what happened. If we take away a position, then it's very hard to restore it later on, so we don't want to do that if, in fact, it's really a vacancy that needs a person there. And I think that's what you have. You have the need, but you just haven't been able to, to fill it for one reason or another. But this whole issue of vacancies, I think, is something I'd just like a little more education on because why do we have so many vacancies? Do we have vacancies really that have been vacant for years, like we heard from one speaker the other night? Or just what is this overall situation, not just in your department, but that, that we have vacancies? Why? And is it that these positions are not needed and we need to just get rid of them, or, or just what? Because I know, like I said, if we take one out, the way we did in 2011, I think that was during the.
Yeah, that was a tough time.
And, and, but then you just don't get them back. And so I, I think this is something we might need to be able to address to our citizens as to why we're showing.
We can look into it. And also, as the assessor mentioned, she did not request additional positions in this budget as well. And a lot of times, a lot of our vacancies, they transcend different funds, so a lot of times, they're not general funds. And organization, our side, sides, we will have a good amount of vacancies because that's just a general churn of burn, that you're always going to have roughly a decent percentage of your workforce going through the different higher, states of the hiring process, but we'll work to get you some information.
Well, I think you said that instead of asking for new ones, you were just going to try to readjust the ones that you have, and, and I applaud you for that.
Thank you.
I, I know that your folks are critical, and we hear about it if somebody thinks that they've made a mistake, so we appreciate your, your work.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Anybody else? Sue, thank you very much, and kudos to you for the seamless transition and the wonderful work you and your staff do.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Sue. Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Kevin Fairley from the IT department will present on the Information Technology CIP budget.
will present on the Information Technology CIP budget for fiscal year '24.
Good afternoon. I'm Kevin Fairley. I have the opportunity to present the IT section of the CIP program. And I'll start with high-level overview. We'll talk a little bit about some of the new projects that are going to be coming. And then if we are interested in status updates on any projects, we can certainly go back and get that for you. The IT section consists of 39 total projects. Seventeen of those are slated to be closed by the end of FY24. About $28 million is programmed for FY24. That's 6% of the overall CIP program. And the average allocation after the FY24 budget is going to be about $16 million a year programmed through those out years. We did have two projects that were closed this past year and there were originally funds in the CIP to pay for the annual recurring costs. Made that decision to move those funds over to the departments and agencies so they can have that annual recurring cost in their budget and be able to pay those. So those two amounts, the 185 and the 630, will be in their budgets for FY24. We do have funding programmed for five new project requests. We'll talk a little bit about these later, but I'm sure some of these are familiar to you, particularly the Sheriff Body, Worn Camera Initiative that actually started this fiscal year. We have 21 projects that did not request any changes or additional funding. Couple highlights for these would be the projects, say, Next Generation 911 is one example. That project, we actually have equipment on the way for routers and switches have been delivered. And we're going to be working with AT&amp;T to get that Next Generation 911 system up and running. Another that's listed on here are the police oceanfront cameras. We're getting close to being able to complete that project. There will be a few funds that will need to be hauled over in FY24 to assist with the Atlantic Park project and potential relocation of some cameras to be able to cover that new activity. Additional Electronic Poll Book, that project was for the voter registrar. So we essentially replaced 100% of their hardware for that project. So that's going to be completed and they actually are using that current hardware today. And the Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, that is assisting with the oceanfront substation that's underway. Couple others of interest, library meeting rooms for the central library. That equipment is ordered and has been installed in all but two of the rooms in that facility. That will finish up shortly. And then there is the one at the bottom with the asterix for the Emergency Operations Center Technology Modernization. That was actually funded with federal funds in order to create that CIP. Programs with no change, our programs are sustainment and replacement CIPs. We have nine of those. One example would be customer relationship management software. And this year, we're going to be implementing two new programs through that CIP. One will be grants management for community organization grants that the community, those nonprofits will be able to go online and actually submit their application. And then we have backend automation and management that will pull those applications and manage that process all the way through award. Another that may be of interest there would be our Acela Sustainment Project. We are making changes to the application to better enable the business community to work with that particular product. We've already made changes. They have been implemented and we do have a roadmap and additional sprints for that software to continue those enhancements and improvements. Work through these. Projects that do have requests for change. 21st Century Resource Planning, that is human capital management software. IT is working with our business stakeholders of human resources, finance, the benefits office. And we have selected a platform to be used for the organization. There is an RFP that's going to be released next month to bring on an implementer to work with that. So the request was to take some of the funds that was originally programmed in FY25 and move those forward to FY24. So we did not lose momentum in the project. So what you see there, the $2.3 million was originally $4.6 million in '25. It didn't increase the project cost. We just moved funds from '25 to '24. So when we actually award those RFPs, we'll be able to go right into implementation and work on those projects. Enterprise Electronic Content and Records Management, that's a libraries project. Libraries has a records management office for the city. We initially had funds programmed for FY24. It was about $3.4 million. That project has been on the books for a long time and the decision was made to, instead of holding those funds earmarked for that project, is to go back, do the analysis against current technology and current solutions and free up those funds for the future years so they can be used for other projects and activities. Programs with modifications. So these, again, are our sustainment CIPs. One of those that did have a change is, again, our, we talked about the human capital management program, but some projects with modifications. One would be the Courts Technology System Sustainment. There was originally $250,000 program last year to go in and make technological improvements in those courts facilities, particularly in the areas of case presentment in the courtrooms. When we got into that particular project, we also determined there were many more systems that had been neglected and not updated over time and they didn't really have lifecycle management plans to keep those current. So we did come back based on that knowledge and looking at those systems and make an additional request for funds for the courts. A few of the new activities that are asking for additional funds, one of those is Sheriff's Office Body worn Cameras. We certainly have a lot of activity with that. There are actually 40 cameras that are already, have been delivered from the Axon product. They've been aligned with their system. Staff training is going on and they will actually be deployed by the end of this month so they can use that when they're doing the full force multiplier work with the police department. That's the first 40 cameras. There'll be another 180 cameras coming during this next interim period. What you see here is the ongoing funding to sustain that program all the way out through FY29, but there is an actual 10-year contract with support and maintenance included in, in that purchase.
Chris.
Yes.
In relation to the Sheriff's Office cameras, which level did we choose?
So we ended up at the same level that the police department, that included the body worn camera and the tasers and the administrative support software that goes along with those activities.
Thank you.
My revenue system for cloud migration. This will take the initial project from an on-premise hardware solution and move that to a cloud-based system. With the cloud-based systems, it gives you the ability to stay current with the software. When you're in the cloud, the upgrades and the support and maintenance activities are taken care of by the vendor. You get a faster turnover and update with those activities. So this software was originally implemented on-premise in 2018 and it's used for personal property, business licensing, parking tickets. It interfaces with the DMV. It interfaces with the Department of Taxation for debt collection. And essentially, when we move this to the cloud, it makes those integrations easier to maintain. A lot of the systems now have connections that you can make between systems and solutions. So this is going to give them enhanced capability and easier lifecycle maintenance moving forward for this particular software. Treasures e-billing, you did hear Ms. Henderson talk about this. This is to do electronic billing for the customers out in the city of Virginia Beach. Some of the stats that she had talked to us about when working, they, and she had it today, about a million pieces of mail on an annual basis that goes out from her personal property bills, reminder notices, real estate bills, delinquent notices, that sort of thing. We took a look at, at this and the $414,000 is the project cost. She can handle the annual recurring costs within her budget. So this one, she will reach a cost of return in less than three years based on projections. So currently, she talked about 50% of her bills are received electronically. If we could get 50% of the rest of those bills in, just 50% that matches the rest of her customer use, she'll save $181,000 a year. And the project is only, again, 414, so it'll pay for itself in less than two and a half.
Yes, I'm sorry. George.
Really, what about water rigging, water meters? Is that, any technology on that coming forth?
Yes, sir. As Councilor Remick, as Bob Bonagudo, Public Utilities Director, mentioned, there's an initial phase of investigating what's needed for Virginia Beach as it relates to doing that. So they're basically kicking the tires and getting a sense of what the requirements would be and then coming up with a funding plan and what that would look like. And likely that will come through the public utilities budget and not necessarily IT's.
Anyone else at this point? Thank you.
Okay. So a few projects that are underway that would have some interest. Public Safety Systems, we have implemented e-ticketing. I know that's something we've talked about in previous years. They're also looking at a phase two to bring in crash reporting into the system and parking tickets into the system. We've also migrated the computer-aided dispatch. That's the CAD system that is used to help get folks to the right place at the right time when the phone call comes in. So that CAD system has been upgraded and migrated to our regional data center. And we're also working on a regional CAD initiative where that CAD information on calls can be shared. Say if something happens in Chesapeake that ends up in Virginia Beach or Norfolk or some other city, we'll be able to share that and pass that data back and forth through the activities. And that 21st Century, the human capital management, I've already, already discussed that a little bit earlier. Major challenges, we would say we really don't have any major challenges with this activity. Again, the majority of our projects are going to close in '24 that we have on the books today. We certainly appreciate your support of the CIP program and putting the money into those technology activities so we can help improve the way customers do business and the way citizens interact with those customers. And that's pretty much what I had.
Yes, anybody? Amelia?
I just wanted to go back to the body worn camera.
Yes, ma'am.
We do have some for the something in the water, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Only 40?
Right. There's going to be 40 cameras implemented and used for that purpose. And that was based on the agreed-upon amount by the Sheriff's Office to be able to effectively train and deploy in this quick amount of time.
No, that's good. Anyone else?
Thank you.
I'll tell you what, I think it's mission critical for the city to always stay up to date with this IT equipment, you know, for a lot of reasons. And you folks do a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Peter Wallace, the IT director, will come and present to City Council the fiscal year '24 Information Technology Department operating budget.
Welcome.
Thanks, sir. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager, appreciate the opportunity to present today. This budget reflects really three years of digital transformation. We talked about a pandemic when it first occurred and how we had to be more agile and mobile. Well, this budget really reflects that. We really had to pick up and move while providing services to the citizens because everything was still open. So as we go through this budget, you'll see that we talk a little about the online availability, the online services, the extra PCs that were purchased then is now due, as well as a single note that the 531 event that also happened to us. If you recall, there's about 400 people had to be moved out of that building along with new PCs. So right now is where it's coming back. So if you see some numbers there, that's reflective of all those things combined. So therefore, as I go into the first, we have a department that's a little bit over on the 200 staff. We have what I call 11 business units. We kind of break it down to support your hardware, your software application side of the house. We have a budget of roughly $41 million. As far as the breakdown of what we have, you can see we're talking about the computer replacement, 7%. And that is for the entire city, right? Budget allocate monies where we can actually, based on age. And as I mentioned last week during our cyber presentation in closed session, this is one of those key areas that we can't afford to really let legacy system catch us behind. Because with that, we can't have, have no support and therefore cannot really be properly cyber-ready for what we have. Unified communication is an area where this is for mostly public safety, radios, communication, and also parks in the wreck as well in public works. As far as the, the breakdown, you can see the mail services had a major dip and really what we did was rely more on internal staff than FTCs. So as we reduce, and this entire budget really reflects an alignment of what we figure was best today, post-pandemic, to support the city going forward. So that's what this charge here represent. And by the way, we did it without adding additional staff. We realigned, take a look at what is working, what's the skills that we need, up skills that we need to make sure that we address those. As far as the, the budget overall, good mention, we already talked about the unified communication, which is a big part of it. The subscription software is where we have those like Microsoft licenses, those enterprise core services that we can't really afford to cut. There's high maintenance on those. It isn't a budget where we have to make sure that we all have licenses to use these systems. Without them, we have no access. So the changes that we have, like I mentioned before, was, you know, as a demand increase for IT, one of the things that we realized with new technology is also embedded in the departments. So the city manager have made a directive to make sure that IT is embedded in all departments. So we call it a federated model where we actually put IT staff to work with the business units to make sure that we maximizing technology for efficiency. And also... And also do not duplicate stuff that we already have, because we don't want to pay for two of everything when really one could do. It's just less burden and less staff support. And so that's why we have really seen a big difference even in our vacancy rate. We have gone from 12% to 8%. The first major under double-digit in probably about seven years. A lot of it is really because we have been working hard with human services, human resources to make sure that we get that number down. A lot of internal promotion as well have been done. And we just hired a deputy to kind of help me with that operation supporting efficiency. Continue that, we've also have a co-location of data center to be more resilient. We know that anytime this area may have a significant event, we want to make sure that we are ready to get back online. And so therefore, we have implemented a hybrid data center. We also have one in building in two, as you know already. And so that has helped us to be more resilient, cyber-ready. And we've also right now increasing our Wi-Fi in the parks for security reasons. We've had done that in the town center to help with some issues they have there. This have been very helpful for the police to use that camera. We also now working on the, my trash morgue is already kind of up and running. And so these are because of the need, and also on Lynn Haven boat ramp, we just started that based on requests to make sure that we address some of the issues there as well. So we're going to use technology to kind of help augment those versus adding additional staff time. So this would help as well the overall cost and expectation. So again, the, I think you mentioned before, I heard before from Kevin said about the human capital management system, that's a new system that is well overdue. The one that we currently have is about 20-plus years old, and we need to make sure that we get this one up to speed. And so we are well underway. We have identified, selected the vendor. Now we're working to integrate and make sure that we have all these things in place. And I've been mentioning about the CAD dispatch. What we have done also, move that to the cloud as well, so that we could be ready anytime, anywhere. That's most of IT budget is about what's next. You have seen the disruption over the years of what happened. So we always in that mindset of what's next? What's next is that we ready? That's our posture to make sure that we are. So we're trying to be very inventive and forecast in what we pick with technology. The rest of that, you'll see where the fiber ring that we working with the Southside Network Authority, there's about 40 miles of fiber in the city that we're going to build. It's already going on right now. And so our area, like I said, about 40 miles, and it's going to connect all the five Southside cities to the fiber. And we're looking for great events to address the unserved, underserved in this area. As far as the awards, we've got some awards over the years, and I believe the one that's really pertain to us is that Storm Sense one, where we're talking about addressing climate resilience. Want to make sure that we are ready again for anything, especially with the bonds that we've seen recently, want to make sure that we're on top of that. And we have been getting natural recognition for those effort that we have done here. So that's kind of my presentation, and if you have any questions, I'll take them.
Any questions? All.
Thank you. City effort, thank you, and council support for that as well.
Yes, we are.
And I just want to say, you know, just think how much IT has progressed even over the last couple of years, and it's ever-changing. And heavens know what's on the horizon. I remember doing home care in the 90s, and I was blessed to have a beeper. Now we have these umbilical cords that some of us lose from time to time. You know, that has more power than Apollo 7. Can you imagine what might be on the horizon five years from now? And what happens if we don't keep up?
Right.
Okay, but just a thought. Thanks a bunch, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Emily LeBeau, Director of Cultural Affairs, will present the Fiscal Year '24 Proposed Budget for the Cultural Affairs Department.
Welcome.
Thank you. Just a second to pull up the presentation. Mayor, members of council, thank you. Oh, Kevin, you're at the right place at the right time.
Good to have experts.
Thank you. Thanks, Kevin. Mayor, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to review the Cultural Affairs budget. Beth Henley, the Deputy Director, and I are glad to be here. The department has three divisions, 12 FTEs, and a budget of $3.8 million. In the proposed budget, the 87% comes from the general fund, which is used for general operations and grants to community organizations. And the remaining 13% comes from the TIP fund. The department oversees the Arts and Humanities Commission, operates the Virginia History Museums, coordinates the public art program, provides contract management to the Sandler Center for the Performing Arts, serves as a liaison to Moca, the Vibe District, the Virginia African-American Cultural Center, and many more cultural organizations. The reduction in the budget is the removal of the one-time appropriated expense for the projection art project at the 24th Street Park funded through the TIP fund. Along with being stewards of our beloved city-owned arts and historic facilities, we create unique experience centered around the arts, education, heritage, culture, and creativity. The photo here was taken in December when the Virginia Beach Human Rights Commission recognized the work of Cultural Affairs in the area of inclusiveness and cultural equity. Nothing I talk about today can happen without the tremendous efforts of our staff. Our work is guided by the city's first strategic plan for the arts called Arts Plan 2030, which we developed along with the community in 2015. It's clear our plan is sound. The arts are vital to the quality of life for our residents, but also help Virginia Beach be attractive to visitors. In November, Virginia Beach was recognized by Conde Nast Traveler as a top 25 destination, in part because of the city's commitment to the arts and history. Beautiful places many times don't just occur naturally. They are a product of investment, investment by the public and by the local government to make a place more attractive to our residents and tourists. Cultural Affairs continues to expand the public art footprint in more neighborhoods and public spaces to further connect residents to where they live. Our commitment to cross-racial and cross-cultural programming is not new, but it's an area of continued growth and opportunity. It's not concentrated only on cultural programming, but extends across our enterprise, including in the history museums where we just worked with the Nansman Tribe to develop a First Peoples Focus Tour, our public art residency programs in Title I schools, and the resurgency of global-inspired gatherings, which are music and dance series focused on multicultural One of our proudest connections is our rich partnership with the Princess Anne County Trading School Union Kempesville High School alumni, who we work with not only in the operations of the PAX Museum at the Renaissance Academy, but in many programs. One of our favorites is Immortal, which is a program where youth from Teens with a Purpose connect with PAX alumni for learning between generations and discovery of commonalities, culminating in a wonderful performance that showcases spoken word poetry. The culminating performance is this Saturday at the Ziders American Dream Theater at 11. It's open to all, not to miss, be missed. Immortal is just one program that we have that helps people connect with one another. The Arts and Humanities Commission supports nonprofits like Tidewater Arts Outreach, which brings art and performance to senior living communities, and Arts for Learning, which you might know as young audiences, does in-classroom programming. Our Virginia Beach History Museums have a tremendous partnership with the Virginia Beach City Public Schools, where we bring history to life in kindergarten classrooms citywide through our saplings program. Cultural Affairs is entrusted in making sure the treasures of today are preserved for the generations for tomorrow. We are doing that in a myriad of ways, such as our history museums, where we're not only stewards of the structures and artifacts, but also the responsibility to make sure stories are shared from one generation to the next. We've started to collect the invaluable oral histories from our PAX UK HS alumni who lived through the days of segregation. One of the biggest undertakings this year was the creation of a public art maintenance plan, which is funded in the proposed budget. Earlier this year, artist Paul DePiscali and his team gave iconic King Neptune a bit of a facelift with by painstakingly scrubbing all the salt and sand, using curatorial techniques to preserve the bronze and ensure that our treasured sculpture is here for a long period of time. The before and after pictures are quite extraordinary. So next time you're down at the boardwalk, make sure that you take a look at its new facelift. The Arts and Humanities Commission, with funding from the city, supports more than two dozen local cultural nonprofit organizations through their grant programs. Collectively, these organizations put on more than 400 performances in our city, reaching thousands of people. Every ticket purchased or seat occupied at a performance is not only an enhancement of the person's quality of life, but also directly translates to revenue generation for local restaurants and businesses. Based on the terms of fulfilling the city's mission and impact to the community and numbers of citizens served, we have to celebrate the important public investment, the Sandler Center for the Performing Arts, which is celebrating its 15th anniversary this year. Since its opening, the Sandler Center has welcomed over 2 million visitors from every walk of life for almost 7,000 events, and generating more than $2.3 million in admission taxes to the city. I think one of the greatest successes of the Sandler Center is how the community has embraced it as their own with a diverse range of audiences from seniors to students and from every corner of the beach. As I conclude, I wanted to highlight a few significant initiatives for the future. We expect to start or complete several public art projects next year in historic Kempesville at Woodstock Skate Park, and a residency arts program where youth created works of art that will be made into utility box wraps in Burton Station, Green Run, and Lake Edward neighborhoods. We are hopeful that the restoration of the Francis Land House will be completed, and we'll begin implementation plans for the recommendations that came out of the newly-created interpretive plan. In the coming year, we are committed to develop a strategy to ensure public art and cultural programming reaches every district of our city, which we will share with you at a later time. But in the meantime, I'm, thank you, I thank you for your continued support and happy to take your questions.
Questions? No, I think it was Chris, I'm sorry.
An update on the Francis Land House?
Yes, it's almost finished. So it's been under restoration. They added, they updated the HVAC, the fire suppression system. It's gotten a re-haul inside. So Building Maintenance, we just had a call with them last week, and they're estimating September for the opening. So we're excited about that.
Just want to congratulate you for this program, and I'm so glad we're going to continue supporting what you do through there. And thank you for working with the Virginia African-American Cultural Center as our advisor, especially with the funds that we've gotten, we've been able to work with you, work with our city manager, and keep things on task and moving. So thank you for all you do, for the arts.
Very impressive, absolutely. Anybody else? Thank you, Emily. You did an amazing job.
Thanks so much.
Vice Mayor, members of council, at this time, Co-Acting Director Stacy Hawkes and Monica Copan will present the Fiscal Year '24 Proposed Budget for Human Resources.
Stand right here. Thank you. Yep. Go. Yep, we got it. All right, good to go. Thank you all very much, and we are here today to talk and present the Human Resources Budget for 2024. Our department has five divisions, and within those divisions, the Human Rights Commission falls within employee relations. We currently have 66 FTEs, and we are here today to talk about support for an additional four FTEs, and we'll give additional details about that in just a moment. Our department is largely made up of staff and some technology that we support, but by and large, it is mostly staff. The additional FTEs that we are seeking support for include the final HR business partners to round out the centralization of the employee relations function citywide. We are 70% complete with that project, and we have five more departments that we need to start working with. Actually, I'm excited to tell you, we're now down to four. We started working with Cynthia in Aquariums just a week ago to get her department onboarded into this new model. We've got really good feedback from the workforce, and we are working with our business partners to make sure that they are in the field, providing support to the employees and the supervisors. We are monitoring trends and issues that bubble up within the department so that we can get out there very quickly and work with leadership and their staff to ensure that work continues to keep moving, employees' concerns are addressed, and that the leadership understands what they need to do to support their staff in the field. The Workplace Violence Threat Assessment Team is formalized. It's been working well when we need it. We have stakeholders that we work with across the city, and depending on what the complaint is, we are really pleased that we are able to deploy staff to deal with these concerns immediately. So we get a concern, and it appears to rise to the level of a potential violation of that policy. We have currently enough bench strength to deal with those, where we are able to stop whatever work is on that business partner's desk at that moment, deploy them to the field, interview everybody, and it is our goal to close any of those complaints within 24 hours. We're doing pretty good. Sometimes we can't get everybody we need in one place, but we are doing really well with that. Additionally, with the centralization, or with the standing up of the VB time, we did centralize the FML process, Family Medical Leave, federally mandated benefit, that we are finding often managers don't know enough about the ins and the outs to meet the Department of Labor deadlines for those. So we have brought that in to our shop, and we are currently working to ensure that the managers know how to operate within the scope of that protected leave to make sure that the work does continue to move. We are honoring the intent of the family medical leave, which is allowing staff to deal with whatever issues are coming up in their family that they might need to provide support for. And then we wanted to implement some ongoing best practices that is ultimately going to save the city money. The centralization was initiated because it was The centralization was initiated because it was, we did not do a deep analysis, but we were certain we were giving away too much Family Medical Leave, and we wanted to go ahead and make sure that we are complying with that, and then it rolls over into the other federal regulations for ADA and what have you, making sure that we're using those programs the way they're intended to be used and supporting the employees. The third thing that we have been able to do recently, and we're very excited to bring forward in front of you all today, is that we've expanded the exit interview program. Historically, exit interviews with the city were done via email. We have got staff who, once they are notified by our department payroll and leave specialists, so there are several hundred of them across the entire city, they let us know when someone's leaving, and we have targeted questions for anyone who's leaving in less than a year, anyone's leaving with under five years of service, and then questions for those individuals leaving with five or greater years of service. And it's our intent to offer to have those in a conversation, right? So reaching out and having them speak with us versus filling out a survey. So we are just getting traction with that. It's recent, it started this year, and we're getting a lot of good feedback that staff are grateful for the opportunity to talk to someone in HR as they are leaving our organization.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council, Vice Mayor, or Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Very happy to be here today to talk to you about the exciting budget, which may be a little bit counterintuitive, but we are really excited about the work that we do. So hopefully, you'll be excited as well when we get to the end of this, and we can talk a little bit more about those vacancies, which I think have brought up a few times today. So this past year, we have had a few compensation changes. You guys have definitely been a huge part of that. City Council last year passed a STEP plan, which greatly impacted our recruitment and retention, specifically in public safety, but even across our organizations. We were really happy about that. We also were able to enact a $15 minimum wage, which was not just for our full-time employees, we also carried that through to part-time and our contingent staff, which is our temporary work staff. That was huge, especially for those employees that were maybe at the bottom of our pay scale. There's a huge difference between an $11 an hour to a $15 an hour pay rate, and that's life-changing at that point. So we're very grateful and very happy about that. We also were able to implement the Market Salary Survey, which had been 10 years and coming. So we were very excited to be able to incorporate all those things that had a little bit of a price tag, but we are very pleased with the results. So thank you for that. The other thing, and Peter talked about this a little bit, that we have been working diligently on, is the upgrade of our human capital management system. Peter didn't say who we selected, so I'm not sure if I was supposed to be a little bit more coy, but I put in the presentation, we selected Workday. So we are going to be moving forward with selecting an implementer for that. This platform is going to be really, really great for the city in Virginia Beach, and the fact that it's going to impact our applicants and their experience applying for positions, the onboarding of employees. Every single employee that works for us will have access to their employee records. It impacts your payroll, it impacts our learning management system, so our training and development. All of these things are going to be rolled into this system, so there's not a person in this room that it wouldn't impact. And it will be something that I think you guys will be really pleased with as far as the analytics and the reporting that we're also able to do. We got a little bit of time before we get there. It's not going to be implemented until the first quarter of January 2025, but it will be something that I think everyone will be pleased with the outcome. There's a couple of things in the budget that we have been asking for, that we haven't currently had funded, but I talked to you a little bit about it a couple of months ago, some of the more proactive recruitment measures that we've undertaken in the past year. We were very graciously given a recruiter position. However, we also realized we needed a little bit of funding for some advertising and for some platforms to do a little bit more of proactive or cold calling and things like that through LinkedIn, through Raisin, through some other platforms. And we were getting money from different areas transferred to us in order to afford these things, and we've asked to just solidify the funding for those things in the budget this year. So we also have a couple of additional talent acquisition business partners that we've added to our staff, and we are really diligently working, establishing relationships with community groups, universities. We were at Earth Day on Saturday, almost got blown out of Mount Trashmore, it was really, really windy. But we are really active and out in the community and making sure that the city of Virginia Beach is promoted as an employer of choice. So we're building that pipeline for our future employees as well, and so that funding will help facilitate that. And then also in the budget, our learning and development group, we were lucky to get some CARES Act funding years ago, or a couple of years ago, to facilitate video training through Adobe Connect. When the CARES Act went away, we realized, hey, this is a really great feature, because we can meet employees where they are. In the past, employees had to come down to Building 19 and spend a half a day or a full day in Building 19 for training. And what we found is, is that people really respond well to being able to have virtual training. So whether it's an hour training, or two-hour training, or half a day training, that virtual Adobe Connect training is really, it meets the employees where they are, and they don't have to take as much time away from the office to do that. So we would like to go ahead and be able to fund that into the future. So some of the future considerations, I talked a little bit about this before, a month ago, but the local, state, and federal changes to labor laws and policies, they're going to impact every employer, we're not an exception. We did take our minimum wage to $15 an hour. The state's going to adjust their minimum wage likely, General Assembly has to approve it to $13.50 in January of 2025, and then in January of 2026, they make it a $15 an hour. It's great that we're a little bit ahead of the curve, but I will tell you that, just like when minimum wage was $7.25 an hour, you couldn't afford to hire anybody at it and not retain them anyway, so the competition kind of reacts to where we are. So if you have a $15 an hour minimum rate, and you can't substantially move all your other employees up as well, sometimes that impacts the compression within the organization, and you do hear about compression. So $15 is the minimum, a CDL driver probably is going to start at about $15.47 an hour. So there is some work still to do on our pay rates and our pay plan, but labor laws and the policies, all those things do tie into everything from our benefit offerings to our federal mandates, so we want to make sure that we keep an eye on those things. And then the increased efficiencies and effectiveness of the centralized employee relations function, I can't tell you how much that is going to impact the support that our employees feel and managers feel in managing their performance management initiatives within the workforce. And the recruiting and retaining talent, I spent a long time on this with you guys the other day. We are still hovering around 700 vacancies, and like I said, we are out there diligently promoting the value proposition statement for the city of Virginia Beach. And we are also working to try to improve that employee experience the first year. We know that the first year of employment is when somebody really decides if they're going to stay with the organization or not. So those three talent acquisition business partners that I talked to about getting, one of the first things that they're going to look to be setting up is to, how do we want to check in with those employees that first year? So after they go to new member orientation that first day, do we reach back out at 30 days and at 90 days and have a conversation with them, and then at the end of their probationary period? Or what do those intervals look like? And then having that relationship with somebody in HR, does that help them kind of feel like they're an invested part of the organization and making sure that they're getting the resources that they need? So we're looking to put that into effect as well. I think that is kind of like a stay interview, if you ever heard of those. I think those things will help us retain some of our employees, but we also have some other things that we just need to be cognizant of moving forward. Maybe we don't want to wait 10 years again for another market salary survey, things like that, that'll help us retain our employees. And then you, as a body, have indicated that after the budget's passed, that you want to start considering, or having a discussion anyway, regarding collective bargaining, and our employees definitively have an interest in the outcome of those conversations. So any questions?
Amelia, and then Worth.
Yeah, I have two. I'm glad you put that for the collective bargaining, that we'll have a chance, you know, to revisit and really understand the process, because we do get calls. When are you going to the step? We want to make sure we go, once we fully understand the process, consequences, or pluses. And for you, I would like to ask, where you mentioned that face-to-face, as people are leaving or thinking of leaving, have you been able to convince them to stay?
The program is relatively new. I cannot definitively answer that, because I'm not doing the exit interviews, but staff haven't indicated that is the outcome yet, but we would like to convince them. The questions are designed to see if there are things that can be corrected before they make the decision to leave, and you can trust and believe, if we hear it, we are going after it.
Good, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Hawkes and Ms. Copan, for this important area of our city, human resources. And in addition to public safety, I would submit that this is almost as important, they're all important, but congratulations on the work that you're doing. If you don't mind answering this question, what are the most important things in hiring and keeping and retaining good employees? Is it salary? Is it benefits? Is it housing? Is it workforce? Culture?
I think it depends. I think we have to have a conversation, and we have to really train managers on how to have that conversation to meet these applicants where they are. People come to the city for a variety of different reasons. Stacy and I both just issued offers to business partners this week that were coming from employers that they were making six figures. One of them's coming because of the stability of city government work, and others coming because they've been laid off twice in the past five years. So I think that ongoing conversation and meeting people where they're at, as far as what will attract them to the city, for some, it's work-life balance, for some, it's a defined retirement. It depends. Now, if your salary and benefits aren't meeting the market, I don't, it doesn't matter what those other things are, though. That's the truth.
And to piggyback on that, once they get in the door, it's how do we hang on to them? And that's where the Human Resources Business Partners for Employee Relations are so important. We hear about things very early days now, because we're there, and we are able to course correct before we get too far afield, and the person says, you know what, this is not my group anymore, I don't belong here, this is not what's going on. And so she brings them in, we try to keep them here, and we're working real hard to make sure that we've got an appropriate amount of staff to go out. As a matter of fact, we spent two hours, me and some staff, with an entire new division in public works that has had a lot of leadership change, to kind of reset and say, this is what we're hearing from your staff, and this is what we need you to do. So it's a combination of factors, and honestly, we have to keep our finger on the pulse and figure out what needs to happen to make sure that the right people are in the right place.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you both very much for your presentation and your work for our city. I was wondering what approximate percentage those 700 vacancies take up in terms of overall vacancy rate in the city?
It's about 11.3%.
Is that a customary range for cities our size?
It's lower than the other market cities. It doesn't seem like a 700, just seems like a huge number, but in comparison to our total FTE count, it's a little bit lower than other market cities, for sure.
Okay, second question would be, when the exit interviewing program gets a little further down the road, to the extent you feel it appropriate, maybe sharing some high-level observations with us when you get through it a little bit would be great.
Certainly, certainly. I think a year would probably be a good benchmark, you know, you get a year's worth of data. If you want it sooner.
Yeah, Patrick.
Mayor, Councilmember Schuman, I think once a year, they give an annual report. It may be too early to do it in the annual report they're going to do for this year, but probably next year, they can include like some descriptive statistics on what comes out of the exit interviews for council's review.
That'd be great.
And I think, Monica, it would be important to say, like, I know our vacancy numbers are around typically where we were prior to COVID, but I think last year, you are the historic numbers on, in terms of hires that you all have been able to make. I think it would be good if you kind of acknowledged kind of where you all were in terms of the number of hires until what you were able to do last year.
So are you talking about the number of people that we've on-boarded? I believe it was 1,700 that we've on-boarded in 2022. It was almost double from what we had done the year before. So we're really, really active. We've had a little bit more turnover, too. I mean, I think that's employers across the world have had a little bit more turnover. So we've had more hires, and we've driven those vacancy numbers down. I think at the highest, it was like closer to 978, 900, somewhere around there. And to drive it down to 700, we are very proud of that, but we'd like to see it lower, of course, but I mean, we're working toward it, for sure. And the departments are really doing a great job. I mean, they are out there, I know they brought it up to you a few times, some of the difficulties they're having, but I think that's representative of the market, and they are working so hard to try to do what they can to impact that, so that we can give the public and our visitors the experiences they deserve.
Okay, yeah, if I could just say, I remember this time last year, we were sitting around wrestling with the concept of, you know, putting in a STEP program, and to the degree the STEP program would encompass, started off with public safety, then we broadened the minimum wage during a very tough time. And based on what you're saying, it sounds like it really borne some very good fruit.
It did, absolutely.
You know, and, you know, one of the things is when the manager and I go to the, you know, award ceremonies, and five-year people, 10-year people, 15, 20, 25, I think, you know, Patrick, can we do somebody 50 years? You know, so when you think about it, you know, we do have a good amount of, you know, retention. But, you know, just a little thought, and, you know, I work with the Military Facilities Alliance. One of the problems that they identified is when new people come onboard in the military to work in our region's houses have trouble finding jobs sometimes. So that could be another potential source of, you know, maybe filling in some vacancies.
We're partnering with some of our military services agencies to do that as well.
You folks do an outstanding job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, our library's director, Director Knight, will come and present the library's fiscal year '24 budget.
Welcome. Hello. My voice can be a little bit low, so don't hesitate to ask me to speak up. Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, council members, and City Manager Duhany. I'm Kimberly Knight, the library director, and I have been here a little over one year. Let's see if this will agree with me today. Yes. As you can see, we have about 245.5 FTEs. We are now at two divisions instead of three. We have restructured to customer experience, which is our customer-facing services, at about 92% of our staff, and then the more behind-the-scenes staff under shared services, which includes our things like HR and technology services, finance, and we're hovering at a proposed budget of about 20,000, of course, I can't see it, a sheet, 20,6091. And this is another way of looking at our budget, and as you can see, the lion's share of our budget is going towards salaries and fringe benefits. Our operating budget of $3,687,083 also includes our $2.3 million, or about 11% of our budget that goes towards books, materials, and supplies. And you'll see, too, that we have grant funding that passes through from our friends of the library that allows us to do programming. What you don't see here is that the majority of our money comes from the city's budget, and then we get about 291,000, or we're expecting to get about 291,000 from state aid. Okay, another breakdown of our budget, just a repeat of some of the things that I shared before, most of it is not scheduled to change, except for you'll see a little bit of a 10% decrease for the law library, and that, and we'll talk about that a little bit more, but that's based on a reduction in court filing fees that support the law library, and we've been seeing that number go down each year, and especially after the pandemic, or during and after the pandemic. Okay, some of our major changes and initiatives that have been going on in the library is that we've been undergoing a restructuring. My predecessor began the process of restructuring our staff, and with my coming aboard, I assessed what they worked on, and then I began adding and changing some of the structure in the library. For example, I added a new deputy director, Rachel Kopchik. We focus on retention along with the rest of the city. We focus on retention along with the rest of the city, and we reclassified some of our paraprofessional positions to become professional library... Masters of Library Degree holders, so that we could increase from 43 librarians to 55. The Library of Virginia had a minimum standard of at least 45 for a city of our size, and we're happily moved beyond that. We're continuing to work on pathways for growth for our librarians, and we've managed to create six entry-level librarian positions, and at least half of those have been filled by staff that already work with us. So we consider that a win. Another set of major changes and initiatives is that, beginning in 2016, I want to say, we were approved for CIP projects that would renovate eight of our 10 locations, and we just finished the Great Neck Library, Great Neck Area Library renovation. They reopen in March of this year, March 2023. And during that same month, we also completed our move of what used to be called special services. They have now moved to the Central Library, which has afforded them more space to grow. They have more hours at the Central Library, more staff to support them, and they are also more visible in this location. They sit right out in the open, whereas at their former location, they were behind a locked door. So here, they have... They're reporting that since they've moved there, they have more people discovering them just by walking into the Central Library and asking questions about the service, and they've received more referrals to family and friends now that people know that this service that is... Had been mostly for those with print... Vision disabilities, or visual impairments, or print issues, reading print, that they were using that service, and now in the new space, we're hoping to become a regional resource and to expand to serving those with hearing impairments, as well as autism and other disabilities. Okay? Another thing we've been doing is we've been working on supporting the Virginia Beach City Public Schools. One of the initiatives we were able to get done this year was to offer free library accounts to non-resident teachers and parent teachers. So before this year, if you were a teacher for Virginia Beach City Public Schools, but you didn't live in the city, you had to pay non-resident fees for a library account, and now we were able to eliminate that. We also offered more than 300 students who are in the seventh grade a career exploration program. They came to hear 10 presenters talk about their careers, and they had hands-on opportunities to practice those careers. And most of the people who participated and presented for us were city employees, like from the aquarium. We had a veterinarian come and speak. We had people from the planning office, from cultural affairs, and our students really reported enjoying hearing more about these careers. And we thank our fellow departments for assisting us with us because we're hoping that maybe some of these seventh graders will grow up to be Virginia Beach City employees with this program. Another initiative that's underway is for creating more services for our older adults. We're in the process of adding homebound delivery services for those who have physical disabilities, either short-term or long-term, that prevent them from coming to a library. We're also providing embedded library collections in our community, such... In places such as senior housing and other places, so people can have access to our materials outside of our buildings. More initiatives that are underway is our hopes to return to pre-pandemic operating hours. For example, we... Our goal is to reinstate Sunday hours at the three locations where they were before the pandemic, Central, Kempsville, and Princess Anne Libraries. In the city manager's proposed budget for fiscal year 2024, we're starting with Phase One of restoring hours at the Central Library only. And our studies showed that over 7,300 people used the Central Library for the nine months that they were open on Sundays before the pandemic, and it worked out to about 800 a month that came in to use our resources, use our meeting rooms, borrow our materials, attend programs on those Sundays. The next thing that we're hoping to do is to expand fine elimination to all accounts. We were able to eliminate overdue fines for youth accounts in 2022, and it has had a very positive effect on youth accounts. Since we did that, we found that 97% of the youth... 97... We had a 97% increase in circulation in youth accounts. Sometimes something small as a overdue fine will make someone decide that they can no longer afford to use the public library, so they become inactive users. And we realize a lower return on investment when we have people who stop using our library. So in hopes to keep people using our library, we're hoping to expand that successful program to all accounts, including for adults, too. And when we do that, we would join 275-plus libraries across the country that have removed fines, overdue fines as a barrier. Nearly 10 libraries in Virginia have already gone fine-free. In Hampton Roads alone, we have Chesapeake, Norfolk, Portsmouth, Suffolk, and Hampton Public Libraries. And our closest comparator in the city, in the state of Virginia, is Prince William County. They have 11 locations and 514,000 residents. Their budget is a little bit smaller than ours, and they have managed to go fine-free as well. Another initiative that would be helpful to the library is we were set to get a $1,000 infusion for the public law library. As I mentioned below, they continue to have lower-than-expected court filing fees, and we often go into the red with that area. So the infusion of 100,000 would help us keep the law library afloat and not have to affect hours or services for that part of the library. Another major change and initiative, I heard someone talk about this the other day, so I'm proud to tell you that we finally have gotten it all together, and our bookmobile is on order. The one that is in this picture is a sample. Of course, ours would be dressed up for Virginia Beach Public Library. It will go around the community and be the face of the library. It will have physical and digital collections on board, as well as space for a mobile classroom where groups can come on and have storytimes and programs and other engagement. And if all goes well, we expect to receive it in early 2024. And this was a partnership between the city and the Virginia Beach Library Foundation. So I wanted to say thank you for letting me come and speak to you today. One of the things I want to make sure I'm leaving you with is that the public library has a very high satisfaction rate with our residents at about 90%. Oftentimes, when people are facing financial or life issues, the library is the place where they can go. We're often called the great equalizer because no matter your background, or how much money you have, or how much education you have, we're a place where you can come and experience cultural activities, free programs, access to information. You can be like this young lady over here and just find out that you're truly superwoman. You can try new technology, and it's all for free, for the most part, especially when we remove barriers for our community and make them understand that the library is a free place and the place for them. Thank you for your time, and I can take some of your questions.
Outstanding presentation. Any...
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that presentation. And you said the bookmobile will be up early 2024?
That's what it's supposed to be. The order went in, and they're supposed to start in July building it.
You want to District One?
I can get it in District One as soon as it's running. District One, we coming, we coming.
All right, my staff that's here, please write that down.
And if it breaks down, make sure it's in District One.
Hello.
Good afternoon. As you've mentioned, you've been here a bit over a year.
Yes.
It's good to see that you have the same energy that you had then when you came aboard.
Oh, I just love it here.
I think it's wonderful. And congratulations to you and your staff for all of your accomplishments. It's so wonderful to learn about all that you're doing for our public libraries and our residents.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen, and then Barbara.
I just want to say hi, Dr. Knight. I'm so glad that you're here. I'm the liaison to the Public Library Board. It's such a happy place, the library, and I'm glad that it's getting this attention that it deserves because there's so much more than books, even though that's still worth going to check out the books, but there's digital books, and there's genealogical research. She went through some of the services that the library is offering, and I'm really glad to hear that with the city manager's proposed budget, we can extend the hours to Sunday to make it more accessible for more people. So you all are doing great work. It's a professional team, a wonderful team of people, and I'm glad for the incredible number of libraries that we have all around the city. So keep it up.
Thank you so much. And Councilmember Rouse, thank you for calling me Dr. Knight. Mr. Duhany started that. And just so you know, I've been here a year now, so I might, once things settle down, start using the education reimbursement program, because I like the sound of Dr. Knight.
Thank you, Barbara.
Well, I would just like to say that we have something in District Two that there are very few of, as my understanding, in the whole country, and that is, we have our library built with the school. When we did that, I think around 2005 or so, you know, it was before that, around 2000, we found out it just didn't work in those communities. And they just weren't... It wasn't done. But it works tremendously well at Creed's because it's a very special community, and you have a great staff of librarians there at Creed's, and they work very collaboratively with the Senior Resource Center next door. And that school library, Senior Resource Center, is really the hub of Southern District Two. And I just compliment the libraries on being able to pull this off because it just wasn't done anyplace. We found out when we talked about it. They said, oh, that won't work.
Yeah, thank you. Those partnerships can be very difficult, but we've been very blessed to have a good relationship with the schools. And I thought you were gonna also mention the Wi-Fi pole that we have outside that helps bring much-needed Wi-Fi to the more rural area of the city.
I do hear sometimes some complaints that it's not really that good, so sometimes it may need to be checked from time to time.
Thank you. I'm looking...
I appreciate being thought of.
Okay.
It's good to offer it to you.
All right.
I just want you to know that that's very unique, and it works so well.
It does. They're a great partnership. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Oh, thank you very much. And, you know, if I just say how far libraries have progressed over the years, I remember back in the 80s, working on my master's with microfiche. Did you ever try to explain what microfiche is to somebody today?
Oh, my gosh. My teens, they're looking at me like, what? You can't just hit a few buttons and it pop up? So yes.
Oh, yeah. Thank you for the wonderful work you do and the service you provide.
Thank you for having us.
Okay, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is the last presentation, the last and the most brief presentation of your workshop today before you go into your council comments and discussion. At this time, Kathleen Alcock with the Planning Department will provide your pending planning items update for your items that you will cover at your next council meetings.
Thank you. Barbara?
No, that's all right. I missed the opportunity. I was just gonna say, I don't like not having these presentations. Some of them are pretty important, like the non-departmental. So how should we handle questions that we have?
If you have any questions, just feel free to submit them to me, and we'll get you answers to them.
And particularly looking at the council, I understand from my discussion with Kevin that it really does reflect, you know, now the aides or the additional... I think that when we have it in the budget, the official budget, those things need to be reflected. I just don't think it's quite right to not reflect. And that we hadn't made all those decisions by the time this was put together, but it needs to be what it is.
That could be something that we can cover in the next budget, but I think the direction that we got when council adopted it and reconciliation was to handle it with vacancy savings, but it could be something that we project out the cost for in the next fiscal year budget that we present to council.
Not until a year from now?
Yeah, when we present the next budget.
Whatever it's costing, because I really think that the true costs need to be shown somewhere.
It's difficult to know what the cost is right now because, as you said, it wasn't necessarily programmed or decided upon until recently, but it's something that we can project out as we see the trends of what the cost is in the next proposed budget that we present to city council.
Well, I think if you can give us information along, because I do get asked that question, and, you know, being... Saying, I don't know, is certainly not an answer. The public wants to hear how their money's being spent. So as soon as you are getting that data, we need to have it because we need to be able to answer those questions.
Yes, Councilmember, we work for the clerk's office to get that information.
Hey, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. I am here this afternoon to give you a brief overview of the planning items scheduled for your May 16 hearing. There we go. So there are a total of 15 items scheduled for your May 16 agenda, including one ordinance amendment, as well as four short-term rentals. So Item 1 is an ordinance to amend Section 5.3.7 of the Oceanfront Resort District Form Base Code pertaining to temporary commercial parking lots. Temporary commercial parking lots are currently permitted as a limited use in specified areas of the OR district. As currently written, the ordinance limits the operation of temporary commercial parking lots to one year with no extensions permitted. The proposed amendment seeks to provide a solution to the temporary reduction in parking in the resort area expected through the end of 2026 as a result of the construction associated with the Atlantic Park project. If approved, the ordinance would amend the Oceanfront Resort District Form Base Code to allow up to two one-year extensions for temporary commercial parking lots through the end of 2026. This amendment originally proposed to allow the Director of Planning to permit two one-year extensions, however, at the request of the Resort Advisory Commission's Transportation Parking Pedestrian Committee, as well as the Planning and Design Review Committee, staff added a sunset date of December 31, 2026, since the Atlantic Park construction is expected to be completed at that time. There are no changes proposed to the landscaping or surface treatment requirements associated with temporary commercial lots, nor is there any changes proposed for where those lots would be permitted. Staff is unaware of any opposition to the amendment, and the Planning Commission did vote unanimously in favor of the amendment at their April hearing. Items 2 and 3 is a request from Princess Anne Village LLC for a conditional rezoning of a 0.88-acre parcel from AG2 to conditional PDH with an R10 residential district overlay, and to modify the proffers associated with the previous 2022 approval to rezone a nearly 56-acre site for the development of a residential community known as Princess Anne Village. The inclusion of this additional parcel will increase the number of dwelling units from 89 to 93 for an overall density of 2.5 units per acre, which is a slight increase from the 2.45 units per acre from the 2022 approval. Due to the site's location within the 65 to 70 decibel noise zone, SubArea 2, the application was presented to the JRP, who determined that the proposed density was consistent with the ACU's requirements. The current proposal is similar to the 2022 proffered plan with regards to lot size, house styles, open space, and overall layout. The proposed bike path from the Foxfire Trail to Princess Anne Road is still included with this application. A certificate of appropriateness was approved by the Historical Review Board for the demolition of the existing single-family home, as well as the proposed new construction. The modified application was presented to the TA-ITA Committee, who found the proposal to be consistent with the transition area... who found the proposal to be consistent with the transition area design guidelines. Again, there's no known opposition to this application, and the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend support of the item on their consent agenda.
Any city contribution for stormwater contention or runoff on that?
My understanding is that's still an ongoing discussion. We've had some preliminary conversations. They're just not to the point in the design yet to really have idea of specifics, costs, that sort of thing. So I think that's an ongoing discussion.
Any more analysis? Thank you.
Item four is a request for a conditional use permit for a home-based wildlife rehabilitation facility located at 102 Willow Drive. The applicant is a licensed rehabilitator with the Department of Wildlife Resources and works for the Evelyn's Wildlife Rescue based out of Suffolk, Virginia. She intends to provide care to infant and juvenile, small mammals, birds, and reptiles with the goal to return these animals to their natural habitat as soon as possible. All animals will be kept within appropriate cages within an attached garage. And it's outlined in that red circle there. The applicant will provide care to no more than 10 animals at any given time. Typical receiving hours will be between 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. And no transports to or from the site will occur after 10:00 p.m. or before 7:00 a.m. When an animal is ready to be released, it will be picked up by a DWR licensed transporter and taken off-site for release. No animals will be released within the neighborhood. Three letters of support have been received, and staff is unaware of any opposition to the request. The Planning Commission did vote unanimously in favor of the item at their April hearing. Items five and six is a dual request for a conditional rezoning from AG2 to conditional B2 as well as a conditional use permit for an automobile repair garage for property located off of Holland Road. The applicant is proposing to construct a 7,000-square-foot building, the front half of which will be used for retail use, while the rear half will be used for the automobile repair garage. Since the site is located within the Southern Rivers watershed, the applicant did submit a preliminary stormwater analysis, which received a positive recommendation from staff. Due to the site's location within the accident potential zone 2 as well as the greater than 75 decibel noise zone, the applicant has proffered out uses that are considered incompatible within those ACU's areas. To buffer the property from adjacent parcels, existing mature vegetation will remain along the southern property line. And the applicant is proposing two 15-foot landscape buffers, one along the eastern property line and one along the western property line. Staff did find the proposed development to be consistent with other development within the corridor of Holland Road, including a request recently approved just north of this site. One speaker did speak in opposition at the Planning Commission hearing, stating concerns with the number of automobile repair garages within this area as well as general concerns regarding noise and potential impacts to wildlife. The Planning Commission did vote unanimously in favor of the request on their regular agenda. Items seven and eight are requests to rezone 728 South Military Highway from B2 to I1 and for a conditional use permit for a bulk storage yard. In 1992, the current owner rezoned the property from I1 to B2, after which the property was used for decades as a nightclub, restaurant, and pawn shop. The owner of the adjacent property, who operates Herc Rentals, wants to expand their existing bulk storage yard onto the subject property, which necessitates the need for the rezoning and CUP. The property is located within the Military Highway Corridor Suburban Focus Area, which recommends this area for community, commercial, and residential development. While other areas of this corridor have seen a transition to these uses that are recommended by the comp plan, this area does remain largely industrial in nature. The applicant is intending to demolish the existing structure on the site and repave the existing lot. They are also proposing fencing and landscaping around the bulk storage yard in accordance with the zoning ordinance. Given the character of the surrounding properties, staff is of the opinion that the rezoning to I1 is consistent with the area. Although it does not align with the proposed uses of the comp plan, staff does believe the site would be relatively easy to redevelop in the future should market demands change. Staff is recommending, as a condition of the approval, that the CUP would be valid only as long as the bulk storage yard was operated in conjunction with the business at 716 South Military Highway. Staff is unaware of any opposition to the request. And again, the Planning Commission did vote unanimously in favor of the application. Item nine is a request for a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor for property located at 328 Office Square Lane, Suite 203. The applicant is requesting a CUP to allow for the application of permanent makeup within an office suite at the Kempsville Commons condominiums. In addition to the typical salon-type use, the applicant also intends to operate a vocational school on-site for the, to teach microblading to no more than three students. According to the applicant, the salon use and the school use will not overlap. The typical hours of operation will be Monday through Friday from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., with the school operating on Mondays and Wednesdays from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and then on Thursday evenings from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Staff is unaware of any opposition to the request, and the Planning Commission did vote unanimously in favor of the item. Item 10 is a request for a modification of conditions to a 1984 conditional use permit for a group home located at 642 North Lynn Haven Road. The 1984 CUP included a maximum of 20 children at a given time and limited the length of stay to two weeks. The previous group home, Seaton House, operated on this site from 1984 to 2021 and served runaway girls under the age of 16. The current applicant intends to serve unaccompanied minors who have crossed the southern border of the United States and are seeking to be reunited with their families or sponsors living in the United States. The applicant is seeking to increase the length of stay from two weeks to 90 days. The use will take place in an existing building on the church's property that was previously used for Seaton House. Only minor cosmetic changes are proposed to the building exterior. According to the applicant, the average length of stay is 27 days, during which time the children will receive on-site educational, nutritional, social, and mental health services. The facility will operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and will include 10 full-time employees to ensure that there is at least one staff person on-site at any given time. Staff has received 14 letters of support, two letters of opposition, and one letter of concern regarding the proposal. Additionally, at the Planning Commission hearing, there was one speaker in opposition of, and then three speakers, sorry, excuse me, one speaker in support of and three speakers in opposition of the request. In response to the concerns that were raised at the hearing, the Planning Commission did propose the following conditions: that no more than 10 children would be housed on the property at any given time. Those children should be between the ages of five and 17, and there would be a maximum stay of 90 days. After hearing those concerns, the applicant and those in opposition did seem amenable to the recommended conditions. And then the Planning Commission did vote unanimously in favor of the application as amended. Item 11 is a request for a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor located at 968 South Oriole Drive, Suite 100. The applicant intends to offer permanent makeup services within an existing suite, and only one employee is anticipated for the use. Hours of operation are proposed to be between 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. And with the exception of a small sign, no exterior changes are proposed. Staff is unaware of any opposition to the request and has received three letters of support from surrounding businesses. The Planning Commission did vote unanimously in support of the application on their consent agenda. Item 12 is a request for a conditional use permit for a short-term rental in the Ocean's Two condominiums located at 4005 Atlantic Avenue. The request is specifically for Unit 217, a one-bedroom unit within the condominium development. There are no known violations associated with this unit, and it is able to meet the STR requirements of the ordinance. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this request by unanimous vote at their April hearing. Item 13 is another request for a conditional use permit for a short-term rental in the Pacific Place condominiums located at the intersection of Pacific Avenue and Ninth Street. The request is specifically for 911 Pacific Avenue, Unit C, a two-bedroom unit within the condominiums. Pacific Place is one of the condominium developments that has a historical exception for parking per Section 2303 of the zoning ordinance. So each unit has one assigned parking space and is exempt from providing the typical one space per bedroom. There are no pass violations associated with this unit, and the request is able to comply with the STR regulations found in the zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission, again, recommended approval of this request by unanimous vote at their April hearing. Item 14 is another request for a conditional use permit for a short-term rental, again, within the Pacific Place condominiums. This request is for 925 Pacific Avenue, a one-bedroom dwelling within the condos. Again, Pacific Place has a historical exception for parking, and thus is only required to provide one parking space. There are no pass violations associated with this unit, and it has the ability to comply with the STR regulations found in the zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission did vote unanimously in favor of this request as well at their April hearing. The final item, item 15, is a request for a conditional use permit for a short-term rental in the Dolphin Run condominiums located at 303 Atlantic Avenue. This request is specifically for Unit 603, a two-bedroom dwelling unit within the condominiums. Dolphin Run, as with the previous applications, also has that historical exception for parking and thus only has to provide one parking space. Again, no pass violations associated with the unit, and it is able to comply with the STR regulations in the zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission did vote unanimously in favor of the application at their April hearing. And that concludes the briefing, and I'll stand by for any questions.
Any questions, Josh?
Would you mind briefly, just obviously because I'm relatively newer, to explain the historical exemption on the, on the parking for us?
Yeah, so there are certain condominiums within the OR district that have historically operated in a short-term rental-type fashion. And those condominiums, there hasn't proven to be any sort of negative impact by only providing that one space for those units as such. Those condominiums were included in the zoning ordinance with that exception to only have that one space per unit. So it's based on their historical operation in a short-term rental-type fashion.
Dolphin Run, for example. I mean, they've been doing short-term rentals since 1978. And they, they do have a little parking garage. And they have also rented some spaces across the street from us. But there's no way they could provide three spots for the three bedrooms. Because there's, every floor has two, three bedrooms. And then, or even two spots for the two bedrooms. So there's 110 units in that building. So if we required this additional parking, it would just totally put them out of business. All those people have been doing short terminals forever.
I assume different, the different condominiums have different percentage requirements in terms of what can or can't be leased in short-term rentals. Rules vary.
This is a building that's classified as a condo hotel. They cannot get a regular mortgage because of that kind of classification because it's kind of a condo hotel. And it would just really ruin the entire building with 110 units if they hadn't done this. And Edgewater is the same way. And I guess 911 is the same way. So it's just, just a couple of buildings down the ocean, but there's just, it's mission impossible.
And there haven't been any negative impacts with the historical use of these properties as a short-term rental?
Like I say, since 1978, they've been.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Hey, anybody else? Hey, thank you. Is that, is that anybody else? Okay, that's it. Okay, just one. Okay, okay. Council initiatives and comments? Yes, Rosemary.
So most of you know that I started this fundraiser about seven or eight years ago called Crush, and we call it Crush Cancer. And it's, you know, my late husband died of cancer. And Tony Nero and I got together and we started, we have a nice little committee that does this. And so to date, we've raised over $2 million. And every, all the money goes to cancer, rare cancer research. And so our, we have an upcoming event on May 7th. We do it the first Sunday in May, and it's stationary bikes. It's at the Cavalier Golf and Yacht Club. It's not too late if somebody wants to sign up and participate. Let's crushcancer.org. My family's team is called the Monkey Riders. And it's just a really, really great event. We, we, there are a lot of people that come out, hundreds of people come out. And it's outdoors, but we have a tent so that they, whether they can be under the tent. But they really, really enjoy it, and it's for a great cause. And we get a lot of corporate sponsorships, and it's, it's really an amazing thing. And so if, even if you don't participate, and Worth has participated over the years.
It's a great event. It's a beautiful venue and fantastic cause.
Fantastic cause. If nothing else, just stop by and check it out and maybe get involved next year.
And then along that line, you know, the city is going to be launching the cancer awareness, encouraging people to get screened for cancer. We're going to be doing a public relations initiative on that. Jen?
Just to connect to the Vice Mayor, May is Bike Month. And so it's sort of kind of perfect that your fundraiser is raising awareness in that way. So Parks and Rec and, Parks and Rec? And the Active Transportation Advisory Committee are putting some stuff out to help encourage people to try to get 31 miles in, 31 days of May. So a mile a day, see if we can, you know, celebrate biking around. So you can maybe, let's see how many miles, maybe collectively y'all can get, you can get to 31 collectively on that fundraising day.
On the stationary bike.
That's right.
District One. District One.
First of all, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank everybody that attended this funeral service yesterday. And let me tell you something. We talk about how courageous our public safety folks are. Yesterday, I saw that courage in a spouse that I couldn't believe. The spouse got up to eulogize her husband, Captain Chevronati. And I can tell you, I don't think there was a dry eye in the house, and it was something else. I sat there with my colleagues and listened to her have the courage to do that, and it was unbelievable. So thank you for attending. On another note, we have a problem in District One and District Three. The separation line for District One and District Three is Lord Dunmore. Over the past five years, and it could be longer because I'm sure Councilmember Ross Hammond's heard about it. This has turned into Richmond Motor Speedway. We have to do something. And every time the folks come out from the traffic calming program, it doesn't quite meet the threshold. It doesn't quite meet the threshold. Well, I'll tell you what does meet the threshold is I get an email or a phone call once a week about a crash on Lord Dunmore. Now, the neighbors there have suggested that we turn the stop signs or that we even incorporate four-way stops. But we have to think outside the box on this situation on Lord Dunmore because it is becoming very dangerous. And again, the traffic calming program, the folks come out, they get the portable speed trailer, and it's just under the threshold of getting something else done, just under the threshold. So the threshold for me is not the numbers that they develop, but the amount of accidents and the problem we're having on Lord Dunmore. It's a major cut-through road, and it divides District One and District Three. And I attended a Civic League meeting along with Councilmember Berluci a couple of weeks ago. And, and these residents are at wit's end with it. So I'm hoping that we can get, Mr. Manager, get something and, and in our traffic calming program, work together to find a solution with the, with the citizens. Because, you know, we go out and do our study, but the citizens live there every day. They see it every day, and many of their driveways dump out into Lord Dunmore. And I had one individual tell me that he can't even let his children outside the fence. It's so dangerous there on Lord Dunmore. So this is a problem. So if we could get the, if we could double down our efforts and maybe try to figure out how we can rethink this problem, I sure would appreciate it. And I know the good people on Lord Dunmore would appreciate it.
Rocky, you know, a number of years ago, I remember when Jessica Abbott was here. Didn't they put down speed maps?
They did. They got speed tables down. And, and I think, from what I'm hearing from the neighbors, the, the speed table just gave them a bigger runny go to get more speed, to get down Lord Dunmore. So I don't think it's helping. So I don't think it's helping.
No air blowing.
Yeah, it is bad and I know Millie Ross Hammond had to deal with it back when she was the Kempstville rep and it is a dangerous road. So I don't, I know that it doesn't meet the threshold, but it meets my threshold and that's one wreck and one's too many. And so I hope that we can figure out, I've heard that if we turn the stop signs, it may make a difference. I don't know, but I have residents there on Lord Dunmore that are at wit's end with it. So I'd appreciate the help with that.
Very well stated, Rocky. Anybody else?
What you're talking about, they have those six whatever tractor wheels go down that road as well. Yeah, and that's in the residential. It is dangerous. Thanks for sharing it again. Yes, just like Rocky said, I was there, Josh was there and Senator Rouse at that funeral was powerful. It was full. Literally no dry eye.
Yeah. I peeked down to see who else was crying under me, but I couldn't see because the tears were so much in mine. So I couldn't see who else was crying.
The master chiefs and people who came up, they were crying. One of the ladies was trying to sing a song. She broke down, but the spouse was really very brave and a little boy, only 17 years old. Who says that, and at age 44, that was, it was too young, but you know, he was there for a purpose. The other part that I want to mention that happened over this weekend too, was the Virginia Sports Hall of Fame. Really, very nicely done. And we do have someone, Ryan Zimmerman, baseball, plus they had a lot of the oldies, some even with their wheelchairs or walkers. And we had the governor, Allen was there and several other deputies, Lucas, because it is becoming a big regional bridge and it was their 50-year anniversary. It was really good to be there and see them.
Okay, Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I will, if you don't mind, add to the couple of accounts given by Councilmember Ross Hammond and Holcomb. As sad as it was, my goodness, it was just incredibly inspirational too. And to be a new council member standing alongside you, Mr. Mayor, and my colleagues, on the council, and Senator Rouse, to be involved in that kind of an event and to be exposed to the brotherhood and the camaraderie and the wonderful stories that were told about Captain Chevy and to see the pageantry and the, not just from our fire department, but from fire departments, from other jurisdictions and our police force, that will, something that I will remember for the rest of my life.
And yeah, Barbara, if I could just like add on to that, you know, it was tragic, you know, the 44-year-old succumbed to cancer. And once again, we talk about cancer and you know, what we can do and you know, this was a job-related situation, but the help for me, you know, and I agree with you, it was an out, it was, you know, defines Virginia Beach as a city coming together, you know, and you know, and I agree. And Rocky, I'll tell you what, I agree with you, you know, that eulogy that the wife Sarah gave.
Courage.
It was a profile on courage and you know, once again, I think I did our city proud with all the people that, you know, did come and honor. We are a city of heroes. Barbara?
We do have in the budget, the cancer screening that's available for firefighters.
Yes, it's in the proposed budget. Fire Department for firefighters to take advantage of it.
And in this instance, the spouse would be now eligible for the real estate reduction because I'm certainly assuming that this would be considered a line of duty.
So the city supported line of duty and the state confirmed that it was line of duty as well. So yeah, should the spouse apply for it, it's applicable for it.
Well, and understand from, you know, what I've read, that there are, what, four other firefighters who also were at the miracle Friday crash that have contracted some type of cancer. I'm certainly hoping that theirs is a more terrible kind, but I hope that we are trying to make certain that we have got something in place that we can prevent as much as we can with the Medicaid or the cancer screening that's now going to be available. I think it is particularly directed toward the types of things that firefighters are exposed to in detecting 50 kinds of cancers or some such. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's directly targeted at the fire profession. And I think as you want, this council prioritize its public safety. So council funds, multiple turnout chairs, multiple avenues in terms of protection and equipment for to keep our firefighters safe, but it's still a dangerous profession. But council has stepped up and if you approve this budget, it will allow the resources for the fire department to have access to that screening if they can take advantage of it.
It's really important and I think the family, I mean, he has a wonderful family. She's got a lot of big family support. I was very pleased to be able to chat with them. I think the whole community is their family now, so.
Josh? Mr. Mayor, sorry to take another butt at the apple, but I just wanted to make sure the public was aware about two engagement opportunities. I know we've got a week and a half before our May 4th public hearing on the Avondale Kitty Hawk Wind Farm issue and that is, I believe, next Thursday, the 4th at 6:00 PM in council chambers. So if you are somebody who is interested in, who is supportive of, who is critical of the project, all of the above, yeah, please come and learn about it and then ask questions. And the other one, I just wanted to reiterate, and it has been done before, but the survey, the public survey for the election system is online and available at publicinput.com and bless you. And so please take a look at that. I know the statistically valid mail surveys were sent out, but this is also an important opportunity for people to give us a broader sense of their feelings on the matter.
Anybody else?
Yes, Jen and I, I have my sketches. We're ready for something in the morning.
Get rollerboards, probably.
Place I've never tried. But we are excited about this and I think so far the weather is still holding up. So please come out, please come out and enjoy this. We're expecting what, about 65,000? And they're already setting up the tents, so the excitement, they still haven't told us who all are coming, who all are his friends. And he was in town this weekend, so definitely this is something we're supporting and we need council people to come out, put on your sketches too. Come out.
Thank you.
Watching for my bell.
Okay, and if I can wrap up with just a couple of things and, you know, keeping with the theme of healthcare, the manager and I have been approached by a number of healthcare organizations to get involved in a process of, you know, to participate in grant opportunities given the opioid, you know, situation. And so I think we're going to have this hopefully on the schedule for May 2nd.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think as council attorneys, the city received some monies from the opioid settlement and that there's some competitive grounds that if regions get to get to compete for that help, opioid aid.
The opioid crisis in a different region, so the five cities in the south side of Hampton Roads have decided they want to come together in a planning grant. And as the mayor mentioned, we got approached by a lot of community partners and also the five cities about putting forward a resolution to authorize the city managers in the five cities to put out a planning grant that we can work together on a community plan that's, that crosses the five regions to address the opioid pandemic, understanding that drug addiction doesn't go any boundary. So this plan will help us to address it from a regional perspective. This doesn't touch the money that we will receive individually as a city of Virginia Beach, but allows us to unlock other dollars from the state opioid settlement.
And Rocky, conversation we had yesterday, you even brought up the tremendous challenges with fentanyl.
Get my name added to this too, I'd appreciate it.
Anybody else wants to jump? No problem, please. You know, just let Mark know and if we could get a full council thing on that, it would be great. Let's put it this way, any council member not want to be on? Okay, let's make it a council initiative.
Yes, Mayor.
And then the one final thing is tomorrow, you know, once again, this council has dedicated affordable housing as a priority and Chris has been involved also with the thing and tomorrow, the, and Chris, I know you're out of town, you're aware of the meeting tomorrow. Okay, Regional Housing Assessment Work Session, it'll be tomorrow and it's going to be at the Seaside Harbor at 509 18th Street at 12 o'clock. And you know, a lot of the mayors are involved in it. Chris has graciously offered to help out, you know, with this initiative too, because we do take affordable housing, you know, very seriously. Okay? Yeah.
With that, Tiffany's going to be helping out communications for the housing summit. We're trying to draft in the list of attendees because we have a limited amount of space for the library and so I have directed staff to make sure that each council member had five or 10 invites. So that way, if you have stakeholders within your district, we want to make sure real estate agents, just residents, professionals, that we can get those RSVPs before we open up to the public because we do have limited space at the public library.
Right, we are, take this as a priority. Okay, at this point, the chair will entertain a motion to recess sent to a closed session pursuant to the exemptions for local meetings allowed by Section 2.237 11A Code of Virginia as meant for the following purposes. Personnel matters, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment for motion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A1, and that would be council appointments, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees to have a motion. So move.
Second.
Councilmember Rogers, ask it. Senator Erich Lee?
Aye.
Senator Wilson? Aye.
Senator Ross Hammond?
Aye.
Senator Moore?
Aye.
Senator Miller?
Aye.
Aye.
Senator Wilson?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are reassessed into. Okay, we are reassessed into.